How the hell else can you stand it?
Politically, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty. Good morning, everyone. Anybody have any questions of interest with the agenda? The ways we will consider the agenda approved. Madam Auditor, we please read the minutes of our previous meeting.
August thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, the Board of Supervisors met at nine AM with Jean Hayden Chair Presiding. Member present were Schultz, Dozart, Hayden, Mulbaren, and I. Then it's Rossberg.
They will always get us kicked out.
You do. No double Hydens. Minutes of their previous meeting were read and approved. On motion, the board recognized claims for public health and approved claims for all other departments. The board approved the resignation of Henry Policeman, trustee, union township. Motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Dozart to approve the liquor license for Wine Time LLC. Motion passed unanimously. The discussion was made with Chuck Edelman for the year-end budget recap. Fiscal year, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. A motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Mulbaren to approve the following resolution, twenty twenty-four dash twenty-nine. Resolution certifying taxes payable twenty-four and twenty-five. Uh, let's see, voting aye, Schultz, Dozart, Hayden, Mulbaren, Rossberg. Motion passed unanimously. On motion, duly seconded, the board adjourned eleven fifteen AM. Agendas for the next meeting are posted available to courthouse on Friday, four thirty AM preceding the next meeting.
So, all right.
I know.
Just one clerk, clerk.
Yeah, we'll fix that. Easy fix. Easy pleasing.
Alright, very good. I'll look through this. Alright, who had something I'd like to start with on our committee and our special reports?
If you have something at nine fifteen this morning, I don't know if you noticed on your.
I can be real quick this morning. Sherry brought this over. Uh, this is.
Let's do it.
This is the rundown of, of, of the, uh.
Want to sign this?
This is the rundown of the. CDs, thank you. Thank you, alrighty.
Right.
This is the rundown of CDs. She'd get them just about where there's one every month. Uh, something she tries to sell after two months that are, she's busy with tax collection. But, uh, she thinks she's even got them in this year. Uh, she's been kind of watching. She usually even rolls over what they make. But this late recently because of some of the expenses with towers and palls, you know, you had to extra fix and, you know, like maintainers and stuff that needed work. And then obviously with probably the truck and stuff. There was probably different bills coming in for him. So she, she didn't, she didn't roll over the interest, but. Uh, last year was like four hundred and fifty-three, twenty-three to twenty-four, July to, July to July. Four hundred and fifty-three thousand nine, six hundred and ninety-one and eighteen cents. So. But the way we made an interest, that's what we made an interest off of.
That's good.
So that's, that's a significant contribution. Like, you know, helps, helps pay the bills around here.
Would that be reflected in the report that John showed us last week? That's, you know, we're talking about that growing.
All the revenue, yeah.
Yeah, that's all. Part of the, part of the equation of why our, our general fund is higher than our expenses per.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's a significant.
We're growing that from what it.
Partially.
I mean, we're trying to do more things like that.
It can all go into the general fund, all that interest.
So I think if we try to do that with grants in the future, or they're coming in even, because you don't always use them all right away. Because I was even talking to you this morning. I said, well, but if you've enrolled them over into a ninety-day or a six, a six-month deal, you know, and you need something where you knew you're not going to need that money pronto in a grant necessarily, you know? Things like that. I don't, I think you could probably do that. I mean, maybe we're going to make sure we're not doing something illegal, but you see what I mean?
That's just significant because it's about two, two and a half percent of our total budget increase. So I mean, you know, that's, that's significant.
Well, my mind is, I mean, that's some of the things I think we need to be doing to try to help reduce tax asking. Let's do what we can do to earn money.
Think the state does that with their three million?
Let's, let's hope so.
Oh, I'm sure. Sure.
Probably why they can go down to three percent interest or three percent tax. Go to zero on, maybe, maybe we could do that in Washington? Probably not.
They're borrowing, they're borrowing. Anyway, if you want to take a look at it, there it is.
At least it don't worry.
That was something that, that's all I really had. Otherwise, I could, I could tell you about Cook and Porkbelly. But other than that, I was kind of busy.
If we, uh, need to fill some time, we will come back to you.
Oh, you're good.
Alright. Uh, Dave, you got something you could?
I had a few things here. Um, on region twelve last week, we did talk about having, you know, the city, they're calling it a county roundtable. They thought maybe November, December might be a better timeframe. They tried to get Paul and the CDC and our city council members and I was together and have a, uh, evening. Rick and Chris were going to work on that and reach out to Paul and kind of put it together, but they thought maybe after the barbecue fest is full of that, you know, I don't think that would play very big a time. Um, otherwise, it's pretty much businesses normal. We went through, I can pass around some of the reports they had. They, they had transit reports, directory board. Chris gave his local assistance report. We did pass a meat and poultry loan fund. Um, we have about two million left in that, and it looks like there's a number of applicants, so that, that fund will be used up. We awarded a four million dollars to a meat processing plant, Manchai Wharf. Just a detail about Manch, if you want to look through that, but trying to get the money out, doing what it's supposed to do to get the small and mid-sized packers going to have more options for us. Let's see, we had to update a few plans. Uh, that was just housekeeping. Said no, our homes prior to home and the two condos, we're still trying, there's number homes, we're still trying to move. We're a slow market right now. But we have a list for sale. If we get those moves, we can continue it on housing projects. What else happened? Then I take off tonight. Will we take off tonight? I think, you know, since Jean and I, we've got a meeting there at four thirty. Um, and then I did have Jeff Gallagher. Some county property unveil that we were going to potentially work on and clean up that creek line, but he just said, keep me in posted, you know, I talked to Paul about it, and he was going to submit a application to Hunger Canyons for a deer project to kind of give a bank stabilization, use some of that. I think that has to happen first, and then what, what we do with it. But Jeff basically still said, I'm still very interested. I'm already mowing it, taking care of that property, even though it's counties. But somewhere, someday down the road, some guys into places like the okay, I'm just purchasing that. That's about all I got for you.
Oh, yeah, five minutes or so. Uh, I just kind of wanted to give you guys an update on remember we brought that map board for your, uh, Manthell Alpin? We thought that, you know, I printed that out. So, uh, Don talked about that, that, I came out July first. There have been three maps sent out, and it was shared on Friday that none of these will be used. So whoever had memorized that, whoever thinks we know what, what we're going to be forget, you ever knew that?
So why did it change?
Uh, it's going to be finalized August first, two thousand twenty-four. So that's to be continued. Why now, uh, just.
When?
August first.
Past August first.
Well, that's.
You say we missed it.
We still haven't seen it. I haven't seen it. So, uh, one, one of the concerns is what's going to happen to the, the buildings that are owned by the region, uh, how those are building up.
Like that stuff we bought, subsidy and what have you?
And that one is running, uh, we need to do a budget, and then already about three hundred seven thousand more than what they thought the crisis center. Uh, they don't want it to close, so they did approve, find giving some money forward, but they are concerned about the state, uh, feeling like the, uh, that we're just moving money because we're, we're going to get the same amount of money. I didn't, in our first quarter, we won't because we have so much money in the balance. So just kind of an update on, uh, I should kind of the minute. So that map that we were looking at last town is not the one that they have the doubt that I haven't seen that exact one yet. So we I didn't even talk to you.
Uh, I didn't have anything last week. Uh, today, West Central Community Action, five o'clock, got a finance committee, committee meeting, five thirty, regular committee meeting. And I know we have people online and here in the audience, so I thought I'd share with them a little bit about the fund that we have at the supervisor meetings and the information that we toss back and forth together. And the question today is that, uh, in eighteen eighty-one, Crawford County had a reward of two dollars per wolf scout. How many dollars did Crawford County pay out in eighteen eighty-one for wolf scouts totally? And nobody will guess it. And I'll tell you why after I give you the answer. Wolf, wolf scouts, wolf scout. To get the ball rolling, I'm going to say a hundred. Okay?
Hundred dollars?
Hundred scowls, so it'd be two hundred dollars. Any other guesses?
I said, nobody's going to guess. Some, I'm saying zero because there was no wolves.
Okay? Any other guesses?
Was there a lot of move migration back and forth between here and Wyoming? If that be the case, I would probably say four hundred dollars.
The, the answer is two hundred and forty-seven dollars. And why they made an odd number, I don't know. Uh, haven't been able to figure that out. Somebody had a half a one, or whatever, but they paid two hundred and forty-seven. So there were, were wolves in Crawford County. Hundred and forty years ago. I mean, they, there's a hundred and twenty wolves, hundred and twenty-some wolves.
Local farmers.
Right, it's less like rickets area, same one as spring while planting. So he thought with the large coyote, maybe you get better to look at it. Okay? So that's all I got to.
Well, that was.
Just a young man can vouch for his dad.
I don't know.
No, no bounties in Crawford. I'll just say that.
No bounties.
Currently, we don't want, yeah, we don't want scouts, we don't want chicken be.
Wolf scout?
We don't want. None of the things, not, not here in the courthouse.
We started that stuff in the audit, in the auditor's audit, don't we?
I will be disappointed that we won't be recording bounties and, yeah.
No pocket gopher claws?
Sorry, not me. I think we even got rid of the cake pan they used to count them in.
Okay.
We do still have the receipt book. Thank you. Yes. Okay. No cake pan though.
My name will be in it. Bring it up here when I'm injured. Yep.
That's pretty good. I think that we should just.
I can graph, uh, I got the CRP contract, all that paper we were discussing last week with, uh, the new CRP up by the eggs across the road. That's all taken care of.
Oh, the.
I signed the papers this morning on it and Langhold was going to sign, he might already signed the papers as well, so. It was a mid-year, mid-contract deal that did not need to be completed.
Oh.
So they just determined trees.
Made it sound like it did.
Yeah, but that, actually Josh Langhold looked into it, and it's one of those things that Hawaii had to have it, but don't need to be completed. So like, we just then chose not to do it. That's it.
Alright, very good. Thanks for taking care of all that, Kyle. Appreciate it. Alright, I think that it's close enough to our nine fifteen discussion regarding, uh, the county's insurance plan. And I can see we've got some folks on Zoom that are wanting to, uh, talk about that. So let's open that up so we can have the questions and concerns with our new plan. We've got some employees here, and they brought forward, uh, what's it appear, Amy, there's places to.
Those employees there.
Alright, so.
CDs.
Who is going to take control of, uh, from, uh, Holmes Murphy for our insurance?
Sure.
Joe? Joe?
Can you guys hear me? This is Joe Langle.
Yes, Joe, we can hear you. Thank you.
Yeah, so first off, apologies, Jeff Clayton and I, who you've met as well, we have to travel to Marshalltown. So in a vehicle, I am not driving. He is driving, so we're safe. But we do have Keith and Melissa and Anne in the office as well. And then we thought we'd bring in Denise Ballard and Jennifer from IGACP, because they're the true experts on the IGACP plan. But there has been some back and forth with Amy and Terry quite a bit on some of the employee issues. And, you know, the, I think everybody's goal is to get these issues resolved. So some of the things we've been working on are chiropractors. Uh, a workaround to actually cover every single chiropractor in town. So instead of limiting it to just the Walmart network, because you're partial self-funded, there is a workaround there to cover all chiropractors. Um, the other issues were some of these surgical, uh, facilities asking for upfront dollars. And Denise can speak to a little bit more about that, but just wanted to kick that off and see if there was questions or how you guys want to do this, or if you want us to talk about the workarounds and some of the solutions first.
Well, I think the chiropractor, um, is just a small portion of that problem because our old plan, um, had, there was no dollars that went to the medical. You had an office visit. So you're going from paying nothing to paying, you know, whatever that doctor visit costs, which could be a hundred dollars, it could be three hundred dollars, depending on what doctor you go to. And that is also your chiropractor visit as well, you know? Of course, you were paying, you know, six dollars to ten dollars before, and now you're paying fifty to seventy-five. So the chiropractor is just one piece of that. And I, and I, you know, I'm not speaking for her, but I also kind of feel like the board thought we were getting a better plan, but not having those office visits covered, um, is not a better plan. And I think if that, if we had known that was such a major change, that we would have asked for some kind of plan that had a co-pay. Or so there was some cost, you know, sharing, but not a whole three hundred dollars or, you know, something like that, like, okay.
Okay, Amy, Amy, you guys, one thing to keep in mind, you guys added a high deductible health plan. So if we're talking about the high deductible health plan, that is exactly how those plans run. They are set up that way intentionally for the IRIs.
Now, the high deductible plan, I am talking about the fifteen hundred dollar deductible plan.
Okay, Denise, that plan should function the exact same way as the other plan. So Denise, can you speak to that?
Yeah, so we did go through, once this was brought to our attention, we did go through the, um, SBC for your prior plan, and we couldn't find any documentation where your deductible was waived for chiropractic services. Um, if that was waived, then we can certainly match that benefit. If, if it wasn't waived, um, we, I mean, we can match that. We can waive deductible on chiropractic services either way, whether your prior plan did or didn't. Um, but we did kind of scour that SBC and couldn't find any language. So we didn't set this plan, this current plan up to waive, uh, chiropractic deductible as, um, it, it just had, well, nobody brought it to our attention. So um, Amy, I think that, Amy, you're saying under your prior plan, on the traditional plan, not the HSA, under the prior plan, your two thousand dollar deductible was waived, and you simply paid twenty percent coinsurance when you went to the chiropractor. Is that correct?
Not just chiropractor, that would be all-in network doctor visits.
Okay, so all.
Attached to the PPO, uh, network is what they because I asked Walmart, I called Walmart directly and gave them my EOB from March and, you know, and asked them, how would you process this in March? And how would you process this now? And they said that was the difference was the deductible was waived on all in-network office visits, which included chiropractor, your regular writer, all of that.
Yeah.
And I think that is a major change in the plan that.
That, if that was the case, that absolutely is a major change. Um, so I guess Holmes, um, do you have any documentation of that, or were you aware that we were waiving deductible on all, all office visits?
You're told, I'm telling you with no statement. It's sent.
Yeah. Denise, I don't, Denise, off the top of my head, I don't know exactly the comparison. We became the agent on April first, so we were not the current agent setting that plan up. So we were scrambling to get, you know, SBCs and SPDs, things like that. But the intention was to match, so if it, if they did waive it, we did not know.
Yeah, I can't find anywhere that we have that that was documented either. I have another SPU.
So, yeah, I also looked through our summaries before, and I, it took me actually talking to Walmart. From Walmart.
Sure.
Because I could not find it anywhere. And that's when they said that it was attached to the PPO network. I mean, so I don't know in your world what that means, but that's what they hold.
Yeah, and you know, you had a self-funded plan, and there are a lot of, um, you have a lot of flexibility with, with self-funding, so it could have been a decision that was made by the county years ago, and, and you guys adopted it, and, um, it's not documented. So um, again, we couldn't find that, but we are happy to modify your current plan to waive deductible. If you waive your, we did reduce your employee deductible, it was two thousand, it's now fifteen hundred. I'm going to just speak on a, on a single plan for now, but so we would waive that fifteen hundred dollar deductible for office visits. What that means to Crawford County is the cost of the office visit, um, that would normally go towards deductible would actually require payment because Walmart's not waiving that. We're building, you know, we're creating that ourselves. So kind of like I said, self-funding, there's a lot of flexibility. We have that similar flexibility, so we can modify your plan based on your desire. Um, so if we waive that deductible, what the, what would normally go to deductible would be paid out of your partial self-fund reserve. So there would be some cost to Crawford County to enhance your benefit to waive that deductible and have the, the benefit go to, straight to coinsurance. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yes, yeah. Where would we see that billing at? Would that still be through the EBS bill?
Yeah, it would, um, it would all, and, and Jennifer, pipe in here if I'm saying something incorrectly, um, but that would all be, uh, a seamless process. So there's nothing that, that you would have to do or even see. It would, you would just see, um, utilization in your partial self-fund be a little higher than it would be otherwise.
Okay.
Yeah, but there's no, there's no separate billing, the employee, we would communicate the plan design change to all, um, you know, typically we just do this for chiropractors. So I'm going to, I'm going to want to talk with my team about this, but we, we would want to communicate to physician offices that the planned deductible is waived, and they should collect just the coinsurance, the day of service, and reimbursement would then be made back to that physician, whether that be a chiropractor or a family practice, whatever, would be made back to that physician by EBS employee benefit systems.
And I think typically, um, you know, you will see, getting back to that bill, you will just see those flow through as claims, claims funding and claims that you are paying. And then on the employee side as well, uh, typically things that go to deductible, that provider's not going to collect that at the time of service. So the employee, um, should be a fairly seamless experience for the employee in that they go to their primary care provider.
Good point.
Provider sees that it goes to deductible, doesn't matter that it's partially self-funded necessarily. We can still communicate so they're aware that there's that second layer coming, uh, so that they, they know to expect that. But what will happen is the employee will go for their visit, the provider will bill that to Walmart, and then behind the scenes, Walmart will funnel that claim to EBS after they've paid it. EBS will pay their part, and then after that is complete, the employee will get a bill from the provider. So.
And that bill should reflect the twenty percent coinsure.
Yes.
So, yeah, that was a really valid point, Jennifer. So it'll actually be easier than it first thought.
Yeah, um, you know, I still think it's important that maybe we, we communicate to some of the more frequently utilized providers.
Especially chiropractors, yeah.
Yeah, and, and specifically chiropractors.
Right. So I have a real quick question. Uh, if this isn't that big of a change prior, without them having to pay upfront, this money's going to come out of our reserves. And I know my, for the Amys of the world, my, where, where was that money coming from before? If it wasn't coming from reserves and it wasn't part of our plan, Carrie might know the answer.
It would, it was probably coming from our self-fund because we were paying our own claims. But. Prior to Holmes Murphy, we were paying our own claim. No, right now, we pay, um, EBS, and they hold a fund. We also have our self-fund yet. But they hold, um, a fund for us, and we prepaid into that fund, I think it was thirteen or fourteen thousand. I can't remember exactly. Back in the, probably the beginning or the end of June to prepare for bills that would come July one and and till present. Um, so yes, prior to July one, um, moving with the new plan, um, we paid our own claims. So it did come out of our self-fund.
So that money's sitting there, it hasn't been used, right?
What, the self-insurance fund? It's actually helping to pay for the increase in premium.
Okay.
Partially. Because we only budgeted so much into the departments.
Remember that.
There's a five hundred dollar per, per plan approximately. That's family. So the singles are less than five hundred. Um, so, yeah, I could get you a dollar amount of that.
If I knew the answer, I wouldn't have to ask.
No, I get that. I get that.
I'm hoping I'm, I'm kind of thinking the same way a lot of people in that crowd are, is, uh, so if you went to the chiropractor during this time period, and you ended up having to pay that full amount, will they get reimbursed back for the money that came out of their pocket?
Jennifer shaking her head. Yes.
We can. Yes, so employees will be made whole. Um, there, there have been no claims that have processed through EBS right now, uh, for your new plan year, and that's by design. That is because your, uh, we want to make sure that your employees get credit for your prior deductible and out-of-pocket that they have met. And so what happens is we all know that it takes those hospital charges a while to come through. And so if someone was in the hospital on June thirtieth, which unfortunately, we all know that there are people who are going to have those inpatient outpatient procedures at the end of a plan year, those claims won't hit your current plan for probably, you know, four to six weeks. And so if we take those accumulators right on seven one, those people won't get credit. So that's why we need to allow time for all of those charges to come through so that employees are properly credited for what they spent prior. And this is all a very, very normal process that happens all the time, um, this runout and then starting a new plan. Um, and so with that said, employees right now, um, there shouldn't necessarily be any reimbursement situation because there are no claims that have processed on the new plan through EBS for the partial self-fund. So we shouldn't have to go back and pick up any claims and reprocess four, seven, one forward, which is why this is a good time to have this conversation and make changes if needed.
Okay, I'm glad about that. So the actual change itself, the way that, that. Okay, I'm glad about that. So the actual change itself, the way that the, the change things, is that going to be immediate? Like, uh, if somebody's going to the chiropractor tomorrow, will it be a different, uh, set of rules for them? Will it be more like what they're used to starting tomorrow or starting next week or?
Um, so again, the, the chiropractic is still, the chiropractor should still be sending those claims in to Wellmark, to process toward the deductible first regardless. So I think that's an important point as well is that because there's no copay associated with the account, the employee experience is truly, I go to the provider, whether it's a chiropractor, my office, um, whether it's in or out of network, and that person sends that claim into my insurance. It then processes toward my deductible, um, does the same EBS thing behind the scenes. Then the provider gets paid and I receive a bill.
So the, the difference there is the employee experience should be the same. There should be no monetary collection at the time of service because we need that claim to be processed, get the, get the appropriate discount from the insurance carrier before the employee pays their portion or percentage of that claim. The difference, if, if we make this change that we're discussing, um, is simply who's paying that provider? If we continue doing it the way it's set up right now, the employee would be billed for their portion of the deductible and then the, and the employee would pay the provider. Um, and then, and, and then that would all just go to accumulate towards their, their Wellmark and partial self-fund deductible. Under the new strategy, if we move to the, the, uh, way we're discussing it, just as Jennifer said, that claim's going to go through the system. It's going to process, but instead of the employee being billed for their, you know, portion of that deductible, we're going to waive deductible and EBS will pay where it was prior being paid by the employee or would have been paid by the employee. So EBS will pay that claim. Once the provider has been paid by EBS, the, there's going to be a remaining balance, which should be 20% of, of the cost of service. Um, and then that's where the employee will be billed from the provider, the 20%, you know, that, that remaining 20%. The employee will pay that and then the claim will, will be done.
So Denise, what, what you're saying is that no employee should pay for any, should pay any provider on the day of service?
Correct. Correct. Because the, the provider really shouldn't know what to even bill the employee until that claim is processed by Wellmark. Because the employee's liability on a claim is 20% of billed charges. Well, that claim has to be discounted and those discounts are, yeah, close to 50%. So we want that claim to be discounted. So the 20% is less, not more. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Uh, we've got a lot of people shaking their head here. So I think that they.
And that does sense, but I also don't believe that's what's happening because we've had several employees that are going in to have a service. They verify benefits and the doctor office is going, oh, we are going to require payment before we do anything because your deductible is $6,000.
So that's very different because you're now talking about inpatient outpatient as opposed to doctors' offices. So what, what I was talking about was the doctor's office visits.
Okay.
All right. So we'll finish. So everything's, everybody's happy with that part of it? Any more questions?
Uh, quick question about, so my understanding was that vision and dental stayed the same? I know this discussion was about our health insurance, but I went to the eye doctor and it came back full bill, no insurance applied. Um, it was just a doctor's visit, an eye doctor visit.
Oh, that's something that these.
Is that, that's not you guys? Okay.
I mean.
I'll talk to you.
That's BSP or something.
Yeah, it's not, um, the knee surgery or whatever.
Okay.
Yeah.
Never mind that.
Oh, but anyway, I had the same, and it was a medical test that they did at the eye doctor and I got the full bill.
But that, yeah, that's I.
But it was.
That's probably outpatient or considered. I don't know. I don't know.
Holmes Murphy will be able to address the dental vision. Um, the, the IG HCP plan is specifically the medical and partial self-fund.
Okay, thank you.
So if I could now, um, switch gears to inpatient outpatient, or do we have more questions on?
I just want to circle back and summarize the doctor office visits now because I, I agree exactly what you're saying is happening. Because I went to the same provider in April, uh, they reduced the fee by 50% approximately. Uh, there was, uh, the amount allowed and, uh, say it was a hundred and fifty dollars, a hundred and, uh, twenty of it was taken care of by the claim, you know, by the self-funded apparently, and there was a $30 coinsurance. Okay. So that's kind of pretty typical what I would see, uh, after, you know, after July 1st, same provider, very similar bill. Uh, the 50% reduction, 100% of that went to deductible. So that's exactly what's happening. And so, uh, you know, so now what you're saying was that the, the county is going to, we're going to switch back to that old system where the, the, uh, partially picked up by the self-fund.
Right, self-fund.
And then a coinsurance amount, 20%.
Right. And I do think next year we need to look at like a copay plan or something.
Yeah.
You know, so there is a little bit more cost sharing, but.
Does that make sense?
So we knew there would be.
Yeah.
Because of the increase in.
Yeah.
You see what I mean?
We want to go back to what.
For your, your resubmission.
Right.
Yeah.
What I got is I've met my deductible. I, we talked, you talked a little bit about it earlier, uh, July or June 26th, I had a knee replacement. I mean, most of me, the hospital never did this, but they requested that I put a down payment on. So I went ahead and paid for my knee surgery. I've got other bills, but anyway, I've met my $2,000 deductible under the previous plan. July 1, it goes to $1,500 deductible, correct? My 2,000 is over.
Correct.
That was my understanding. So I've met my deductible. I've got over $2,000 worth of bills from medical places on my knee that EBS first haven't been paid. I'm waiting for them to pay.
So your, your knee would have been on the prior plan?
Yeah.
Are those, those are bills incurred prior to seven one?
Yes.
But my deductible's met. The deductible carried over.
Yes, I, I understand.
Right.
So because that data service was prior to seven one, EBS won't process any of those claims. Those will be all processed under your prior self-funded plan. However, to your point, you've met your deductible. So you'll have deductible credit on the IG HCP plan for seven one. So all of the claims that you, you know, that you, that were paid under your self-funded plan, you're going to get credit for. You're not, if you were to get on EBS's website or you were to call them, you're not going to be able to see that yet because we're holding claims so that we can get them all caught up. We're only allowed to talk that report.
Ma'am, I've been on your website. I've been on Wellmark's website. The problem is I've met my deductible. I have over $2,000 worth of bills here.
But are those bills for your prior plan? Were those incurred prior to seven one?
They were incurred. Some of them were incurred prior June 26th.
Okay.
But still, my deductible carried over.
But, but that's still for the, the, the claims that were incurred before seven one, EBS will not be paying those claims. Your self-funded plan will pay those.
Just hear these bills now.
Denise. Hold on, hold on. I think.
I do.
No.
They totally, I'm there in full, so I pay.
In their world, but they're just looking for them.
Right. I think, I think Jennifer mentioned that they haven't processed any claims.
Right, but.
But those are after second one, they're just holding those claims and they'll process them at a later speed.
Yes.
Sixty days or at 90 days? Cause I know originally it's at 90, but because we have all of these people that have these claims sitting out there and starting to get bill collectors already, which I think is weird, but they're already getting, you know, hounded at, you need to pay these bills. So are you guys doing that in 60 days, doing that deductible credit?
So regarding bill collectors, let me, let me finish addressing his question. If there are claims that are, that have dates of service prior to seven one, those are paid under your old, your prior plan, the self-funded plan. And what we're doing now has, doesn't have any impact on that. You will get credit for those claims on your new plan.
I'm not following.
So.
Who's going to pay? Wellmark is not going to pay these.
And Wellmark should.
On our own plan, yes, we will.
On the old plan, they should.
Jennifer, Jennifer.
All right, Joe. Let me check.
All right, the auditor will check on it. Go ahead, Joe.
I was just saying, I think some of his issue, he is saying that when he looks on the website, it's not.
Cut out.
This is the timing issue we're talking.
Joe, you're cutting out.
This. They can't hear me. Um, this is the timing issue to Jennifer. I was just hoping you kind of speak to the timing issue. He's looking online and not seeing things.
Yep. So if you're.
This goes to loading at one time.
Yes. Um, you know, like I said, the, we wait to get that prior credit on the EBS portal. We want to make sure that everybody, including you, who had claims running up right through the end of the plan year, we want to make sure you get that credit. That's very important to this process. And so we only load those claims one time. That's why if you're looking on the EBS website for those claims, you won't see those until they've been loaded. Wellmark will only give us that data one time without, without problem. Um, to put it in, in simple terms. And so, um, that is why we're waiting to load all of those prior credits. You won't see your knee surgery. You won't see any of that prior credit for that service show up on EBS until after that has taken place.
When would that?
So my understanding is we had talked about the 90-day mark. And again, I, I know that Melissa and I, uh, from the Holmes team, we'd had some conversations about concerns about employees' bills situation. Um, there should be, uh, there should be nobody in my experience and Denise's experience and EBS's experience, um, who should be being sent to collections already for dates of service after seven one. Because if you think about this, even if you went to the doctor right on seven one, it's going to take that claim, you know, four to six weeks to work through the process of going from your provider to the insurance carrier. The insurance carrier bills the provider. The provider bills you. Normally, once the provider bills you, you still have 30 days to pay for that. Um, so if there's anyone who has dates of service after seven one, that's the important part here. The new IG HCP plan is for any dates of service after seven one. If you have dates of service after seven one and you are having these issues, let me know. Reach out to me. Um, I will make sure that I know Amy knows how to get ahold of me. Um, reach out to me and I will want your specific claim information and we will look into that for you. If you have dates of service prior to seven one, your old plan should still be paying for those. And because they are still paying for those claims, that's why we can't process anything on the new plan yet. So anything that you had, any, any service you had prior to seven one, those claims should be being paid both by Wellmark, your part, your prior partial self, or your prior self-funded plan. Sorry. Um, those should still be being paid.
That answered your question, Doc.
Yes, I know. I understand what you're saying, right?
Let me check.
But the initial meeting that we had with them way back before we, that first meeting, there's going to be everything, we're going to be, you know, just transfer over, going to be no problems. Now I talked to the other lady that was at that first meeting.
Plus that.
I talked to her on the phone a couple of times about these claims. She didn't explain it the way they did.
Okay.
Uh, I guess I will wait and see. I'm not real happy when I've met my deductible and I've got bills hanging out there. I like to pay my bills as soon as possible.
And I, I think that you're going to find that those bills all get paid by the, by your prior self-funded plan. But, but that's easy for us to say. We're not sitting there with the bills in our hands. You are. So with that said, um, if you would like to schedule a call with myself and my team, we can get a claims advocate involved and, and, and help you, help you with that, help you understand it. And then we can work with Holmes Murphy and, and they can help on that prior plan.
Well, I think the first step is Terry checking with Wellmark, correct?
Yes.
Then we'll go to the.
I think we've got a plan for that.
Okay, okay. Well, we're certainly, we want you to be happy and we want a positive experience. So, um, if, if you find this. Yeah, just know that, that we, we, we will walk you through it, um, outside of this meeting, more in a one-on-one setting. If, if that's what you find appropriate, okay?
Appreciate that. Appreciate that. All right. So that one's been resolved. So everybody's good with the, um, copay and circle and back. All right. So now should we move on to inpatient services? That seems to, we have an issue with that also. Everybody's got a specific, uh, issue that's come up. So, uh.
So, uh, inpatient outpatient is, is really pretty simple. When you go to the hospital, um, you know, there shouldn't be again, any, any financial, um, you know, any monetary exchange when you are going in for inpatient outpatient, that claim also needs to travel through the system to get the appropriate discount. Um, and then once that claim's traveled through the system, your responsibility for that claim, whether it's inpatient outpatient, it could be, um, you know, testing in a hospital setting, anything where you're in a facility, you should expect to pay $1,500 and then 20% of remaining charges until you've spent another $1,500. Now you've spent a total of $3,000 and hospital services will be covered at 100% for the rest of the calendar year. Now the questions come up, we've, we've been told that because my deductible is $5,000 at the Wellmark level, they want money upfront because that's a, a large liability. Um, we do provide those, those stickers on the, the, the card that should direct that facility to your EBS benefit so they can see that you do indeed only have a $1,500 deductible. Um, if you need somebody to verify benefits for you, you can reach out to the Holmes Murphy team. You can reach out to the IG HCP team or even EBS Employee Benefit Systems, and they'll verify your benefit with the provider so that they know you have a $1,500 deductible. Um, with that said, I've been hearing over the last probably three months more frequently, these hospitals wanting down payments when they have somebody come in for inpatient outpatient. I'm not hearing that just on IG HCP groups. We're hearing that across the state of Iowa. We own and operate a third-party administration company. So we have groups, they have groups that are self-funded, fully insured, partially self-funded. Um, so this isn't a Wellmark issue. This isn't a self-funded or a partial self-fund issue. This is an issue at facilities who are getting stuck with people not paying bills. So they're protecting themselves for, by asking for a little bit of money upfront. Um, we will work to try to help that be avoided um, by, by explaining to that provider that you do have a rich plan, that you do have a $1,500 deductible and that they should expect payment for everything above that, um, from a combination of EBS and, um, and Wellmark. So we're happy to get involved, you know, any and all the time that that occurs. We have a large population, a very large population of IG HCP members on your side of the state that have the exact plan. You know, their deductible might be different, but the underpinning, the, the base plans are all the same. So, um, just a few examples, Manona County and all of their employees all have the same plan. Um, and, and we're not seeing those issues there. So, um, so does Potawatomi County. You know, there's 500 employees on that plan, not to mention their dependents, the city of. The city of Council Bluffs, that's another five hundred employees, you know, using the same card, carrying the same card that the Crawford County employees are. Um, that's just a few, we have lots of other groups over on your side of the state, so we're. You know, our, um, you know, our antenna's up a little because we're, we're hearing these issues come out of Crawford County. When we're not hearing them come out of some of these other entities that, that have the same plan. So what might be helpful is if you could provide us with a few facility names. Where your, where are these employees doctoring, where they're getting this feedback? And let us do some provider outreach, let, you know, let us call those, those facilities, make sure that they understand your plan. Find out where the disconnect is and see if we can't repair that going forward.
Good idea.
Yeah, it's definitely an issue. I mean, we, I've had people have to come in to get these stickers. Because these providers are literally ripping off the stickers so they can scan the I E card. I mean, it. I know, and, and you know, I've always said, if it's never happened before, it will happen with Crawford County, because that's just. So, but, and, and, and several people have said that they, you know, they tried to explain to the provider. Yes, our card does say the six thousand dollar deductible, but that's, you need to verify my lower deductible with this other. You know, this little sticker guy, and they say, well, that's, that's not my job, you know, that's. This, and, and this is not, I have not heard this from one employee or two, this is several. And, you know, and I actually had an appointment up at the, um, the, our local hospital. And so at the reception area, you know, I kind of explained to him that, you know, the change. And she just so happens to be a fiance of one of our employees, so she understood that that was, you know, one person. Um, but yeah, it, it is the strangest thing, I mean, and it's not just our local hospital, these people are going, you know, other places. And they are literally either taking off the sticker, um, so they have to come and get another one. Um, or they just refuse to verify benefits, which, you know, how do you.
Crazy, yeah.
That's, and do they need to say, you know, how do they tell the person how to do their job, you know, without having. You know, they don't want to be rude about it, but they also don't have to pay fifteen hundred dollars right then when, or six thousand. You know, like, how did, what advice do you have to help them? When they're trying to get these services done and not have to, you know, outweigh five thousand dollars or whatever.
Yeah, I, I think, um, the quickest resolution is going to be provider outreach. I think we're going to have to, um. For one, I don't want your employees to have to spend all this extra time dealing with their insurance. I, that's not their job. So that's our job. So if you could give me the names of a few of the facility, any and all that you are aware of. That, you know, have been kind of pushing back here, um, I'll start by personally calling them myself. And if I don't make the headway that I feel that I will make, then I can get the actual provider outreach team involved. Which would, um, would be at the EBS, the TPA level. Uh, we also have that provider outreach at the Wellmark level, but I think I can get this resolved, uh, myself.
Okay, and the two that I know for sure is, um, it's called, um, CNOS up in Dakota Dunes. And then the other one I believe is like Nebraska Ortho, and I think that is in Omaha.
Yep.
Two that I know for sure, did you have another one?
No, that's the main.
Let me check my list.
Yeah, who you got?
Doom, Doom Surgical Hospital, that's, that's up at Dakota.
Okay.
Or you want me to just give the?
Just give it to Amy.
Yeah, just give it to Amy and show.
Just shoot us an email.
Yeah, shoot them an email, that way they will.
Tulane and Spedeology.
But Amy has our Crawford County or Manning Regional or any of them.
That's the only two I have seen so far.
I think Crawford County was an issue in the very beginning, but I think.
Something new they didn't understand.
Right, but I think maybe now they are not. Yeah, I think they're stopping ripping off those stickers now.
Oh my goodness, so.
I think they got it. I, I don't know about anybody. I, I mean, it's just when people come in, I've been trying to deal with them, have they come in, so.
It's been a, it's been a little while, but I, um, that Dakota Dunes Hospital is familiar to me. We have had some issues, it's been a while, but we did have some issues there. Um, I can't recall if that was coming down from Humboldt County or where, you know, where that was at, but. Um, that is familiar to me, so I'll reach out to them as well as, uh, Nebraska Ortho.
Thank you. Any other questions concerning inpatient outpatient, uh, problems? Sounds like we've got that one handled with getting ahold of individual providers and giving them the education they need. And, uh, just a one-on-one with the people that are really having the issues, I think that's gonna help a lot. A good understanding of how this really is going to work and going backwards to fix what possibly got us off on the wrong foot a little bit. Is gonna help, so I think our meeting has been very productive and I think that having everybody be able to come in and ask and talk about their specific. I think we've hit a lot of, uh, ground. I think we can only get better going forward here with all the understanding of what possibly. Uh, didn't go exactly what we're exposed to and how we're gonna fix it.
Willmark directly.
Dave, got a question?
Yeah, I, I think we really, yeah, did a lot of things that can rectify some of these issues and, and get it back to what we were. If you have one question though, um, that was brought up with the chiropractor. Maybe Denise, she said there's some workarounds that's not in the, in the network.
Yeah, so, uh, what we would, what we'll do in this case is we're going to waive deductible for all office visits. So whether that's a chiropractor or family practice or oncology, office visits are gonna be. Deductible is gonna be waived and you're simply gonna pay twenty percent of whatever those billed charges are. So for your chiropractors, as long as they participate in Blue Cross Blue Shield's Alliance Select PPO program. They're in your network, so your network of chiropractors, um, should be the same. Once we make this programming change to waive deductible. You'll find your chiropractic's experience to be the same with IG HCP as it was with your self-funded plan. Once we make the programming change.
Oh, I'm glad. Will that postdate to July one?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
And just so I understand, we are still under the POS network? For all other doctors, it's just the chiropractor will be in the PPO Alliance Select?
Right, so, um. Because you don't have co, the, the, the big, I don't want to make this too confusing, but the big differential. Between a POS plan and a PPO plan where the employee experience is concerned relates to a co-pay. And because you don't have a co-pay plan, um, it actually makes your experience is gonna. The pro, the reprogramming is gonna be a lot easier. Because you, you don't have a co-pay plan, so all we're doing is waiving deductible and then the plan will run as it should. Whereas if you had a co-pay plan, we'd have to program a flat dollar amount. So that every time you go to the doctor, it's gonna cost you twenty dollars, you know. Where now, we don't have to program a flat dollar amount, we're just saying waive deductible. Waive deductible for office services, charge the employee twenty percent of billed charges. And the claim will then be paid by Wellmark, EBS, and, and it'll be over.
But when someone goes to verify their benefits on Wellmark. Um, you know, our chiropractors now that are not in this POS network. They are on the PPO Alliance Select, so will they be able to view them now? Like when they go into Wellmark, they will see that they're in network now?
So they are in network with the point of service plan, but they're in network by virtue of their national provider agreement. So they're in the national network, which is what's giving you access to Mayo Clinic. And MD Anderson and the Centers of Excellence outside of the state of Iowa is this national network. So if a, if a chiropractor is, um. Is set up under the PPO plan. Then they will be covered under the point of service plan once we reprogram. If the, if the doctor is, let's say, an oncologist and they're not in the point of service plan. They have to be in that national network, they have to be part of the PPO in order for that claim to be considered in network. Know that sounds confusing, but if they're part of the PPO, then it's gonna process through your IG HCP plan. Deductible, twenty percent coinsurance to your out-of-pocket maximum. Inpatient outpatient deductible, twenty percent coinsurance to your out-of-pocket maximum. Whether you're in Iowa or you're outside of Iowa, that's how your plan will process as long as they're part of the Wellmarks. National network or their PPO network. So the only real workaround we're doing here for you guys is, is making sure those chiropractors know. You know, and we're gonna communicate that through a writ, you know, through a letter. EBS will send a letter that says, all, you know, typically we use a sixty mile radius for chiropractors. If you feel we need something larger, we're happy to do so. Most people don't drive more than an hour for a chiro appointment. But sixty mile radius, letters will go to all chiropractors indicating while you're not in the point of service network. Because you're in the PPO network, all Crawford County employees' plan will pay with deductible waived. Twenty percent of, of, uh, billed and or discounted charges.
Okay, great. I mean, I think the biggest ones were the ones that were, you know, we have three in town and two of them are not. And, you know, it upset more than, um.
Absolutely. We, we have a significant amount of IG HCP groups that partial self-fund or do this workaround for chiropractors. Because, um, you know, Wellmark just doesn't let very many chiropractors in this point of service network. So it's not uncommon in a county to have just one, one per county.
Join the Zoom, so I'm sure we'll be very happy to hear that he can now see patients and, um, it be in the network, so.
What's the difference between in-network and out-of-network? It's on the insurance cards, the deductible and max out-of-pocket says the same thing. But they're in-network or out-of-network?
It's the balance bill.
The balance bill.
But they can't balance, uh-uh, they can't balance bill you if they're in the PPO. So if they're part of the national network, they cannot balance bill you. So there is no difference because we have your plan set up so that your in-network benefits and your out-of-network benefits are the same. And they co-mingle, so if you look, if you think about it as a bucket, you have a bucket and that bucket's gotta be filled with. Three thousand dollars, because that's your out-of-pocket maximum. If you go to Mayo Clinic and you've got a thousand dollars, uh, you know, worth of charges, that thousand dollars goes in the bucket. You have two thousand dollars left. If you're in Dakota Dunes and spend five hundred dollars, that goes in the bucket, you know what I mean? So whether you're in-network, out-of-network, your point of service, your PPO, all goes in that same bucket. The employee's liability is three thousand dollars, there can't be balanced bills as long as you're staying within that national PPO network. So that's the same network you had prior, so that should be very familiar.
So then I guess, I'm confused now too, because I was told that we would be balanced billed if we went to anyone out of the network. Because the in-network and out-of-network are both twenty percent. So I guess that's why we were all kind of confused on, why, I mean, what's the difference if we go in-network, out-of-network? And then I was, I was told that it was that balanced bill.
You can be balanced billed if you go outside of Wellmark's, uh, network. So if you go out, if you go to a non-participating blue provide, you know, they, they don't participate with, with Wellmark Blue Cross Blue Shield. In any way, then you can be balanced billed. You'll be very hard pressed to find. Yeah. Provider. Someone would, would always be able to if we challenged. Um, but you would be very hard pressed to find that provider and, and I think one of the, one of the most important things. Here that I just want to reiterate is we're not changing anything about Wellmark's network. So when you mentioned earlier. If someone goes on the website and looks to see if a provider is in-network. You know, these chiropractors that you can now see at the in-network benefit level. They're not going to show on Wellmark's network that they're in. On the point of service network, they will show on Wellmark's PPO network. Correct. Yes, but they're not going to be in your point of service network just because we make this change. This is a change that we are doing utilizing your partial self-fund. We're not changing anything with Wellmark, we are using your partial self-fund to provide this benefit.
Right, and I understand that, that's where, I was just asking, if someone were to go on to there, would they see the chiropractor now? But I understand that they won't, but they can just be rest assured that they are, so.
Yes, make sure the chiropractor is in the PPO network. If they're in the PPO network, like Denise said, they won't be balanced billed.
Everybody understand all that?
And I, I, I think the biggest takeaway that I want everybody to have from today. Is if you have billing problems, reach out to our team.
Does that, and maybe this was covered, and I'm sorry, there's been a lot of ground covered, and if I'm backtracking, I apologize. What about claims post-seven one? That have been submitted by the provider and denied?
Yes.
What if they, what if they, what if they refuse to resubmit? What if, uh, what, what does the employee, what does the person do with those denied claims?
First step, reach out to us, please reach out to us with whatever those claims are and we will work. We will work it from there.
That's easy, thank you.
Yep, make sure, and again, Amy, I hate to put, I hate to put this on you, Amy, but Amy has our contact information. Um, I know there's a lot of people here, so that's the easiest way that, that I know to make sure that everybody here has our contact. Um, I can actually probably put it in the chat as well. So just make sure, any claims question, any bills question. Reach out to the IG HCP team and we will help. Even in those situations where it's been denied, for whatever reason, we will help, but it has to be, um, seven one after. Our team doesn't have any access to anything prior to seven one. If you reach out to us with something prior to seven one, I'm going to connect you with the Holmes Murphy team. Um, so that they can help with that.
All the other questions?
Yeah, so kind of along the same lines, so a, a physician of provider service in office. Uh, you went there post-July, July first, uh, you have the bill. And they've accepted it, they processed it, it's been applied to your deductible. So how are we gonna go back and take care of those that have been paid?
So EBS hasn't paid those claims yet? So there's no, there's.
This would be, go to self-insurance, I think, you know, the co-insurance is, is under that. It's in the office provider service, so I'm just kind of wondering how to kind of clean it up, if you will.
So there's, there's no manual cleanup on your end necessary, anything from seven one forward. Will be paid by Wellmark and then by EBS. We don't need to go back and catch anything because if you remember, those claims haven't processed at all yet on the EBS side. Because we're waiting for everybody's accumulators and waiting for all those claims dollars to catch up, so.
You had a service like say July night, you got a bill on August four, paid the bill or anything for a hundred and fifty dollars.
Got it.
And it was our, applied towards your deductible, you know, because it was, you know, it was a deductible, that's why I said, how do you clean those up?
So you already paid for it and you're questioning whether or not you should have?
Well, no, I'm just wondering, because now what we're saying is that would have gone to the self-funded with a twenty percent co-insurance.
Oh, yep.
So then, how do we clean those up?
Yes, so EBS will pay all claims from seven one forward as appropriate. Um, based on your benefit levels. And then if a provider is overpaid because you paid and EBS paid, then that provider will owe you that money back. I'm happy to talk through your specific situation with you offline if you would like. I put my.
I'm kind of asking in a general sense, but from a personal standpoint. You know, because you see, we these, and, and so, I guess I'm a little confused because I don't know why. You know, if it, if it's paid through the self-funded, kind of like the old system, it still has to be processed through Wellmark and through EBS. Back to the county, the bill comes back to the county for that.
It's a, but, it's a different process than prior.
Everything, everything, and if you go to the chiropractor, a, a doctor, visit, whatever. Everything, everything, and if you go to the chiropractor, a doctor, visit, whatever, gets processed through Wellmark.
Right.
And then we'll go to EBS.
EBS.
And then that's when you will see what you need to pay.
Right.
So whether it's, and before it worked the same way except without EBS. It every, every bill went to Wellmark. And then we would be told this is the self-funded.
This is what the county pays. But EBS now will send a bill to the county saying, well, you paid.
No, we paid EBS to pay our bills.
Really? Okay, so so it won't go directly to the county?
And we never got it before. I mean, we never got it before.
But it's changed though, and waiving the deductible on in-office provider visits. Who's picking up the balance of that? You're saying it's coming out of the self-funding.
The county is, the county is picking up the difference.
So EBS is going to have to bill the county for that.
Well, we have access to a reserve, we have access to your money. So you, so you're paying, you're putting some money into the TPA account so that they can use that money to pay claims. So they don't have to alert the county every time we have a claim. We just have access to that money and then we use that money to pay the providers and then we, and then we provide accounting back to the county on a monthly basis so that they can see the exchange of dollars.
Okay, I get, so EBS is basically paying, has access, complete access to the funds.
Yes, they're a claims payer, they're a claims payer.
There we go.
So that would then be provider that should really resubmit to Wellmark, then Wellmark, EBS and all that.
Exactly.
Yep, but the provider doesn't need to resubmit.
No.
Just submit, yeah.
How will they know about this change?
The provider doesn't need to know about the change. The, it's, so it's all automated. So all, when that claim goes to Wellmark, it's Wellmark that communicates the partial self-fund need to EBS. The provider doesn't have to do anything short of submitting that claim to Wellmark. Everything from there happens behind the scenes without involvement from the provider or the employee.
So now EBS is going to get queued up right away and know that now that there's a change to all of these in-office visits, all these people that are getting billed should just wait to pay everything. Because EBS, then that's where the, where kind of the confusion comes in because EBS isn't going to know about this until, you know, it's the nine-day period, which is, which is October first. Right, so there's just going to be a lot of these things outstanding until they get that, then they're queued up, then all of a sudden they're going to get this big flush.
Exactly.
And and everything paid, and so just, and I told the guys, I told them, I said, don't pay your bill. I hate to say that because we're all.
Programmed to pay, yeah.
I said, don't pay your medical bill until, you know, you know, all of this has been cleared. And I think a lot of things will be cleared up when this happens.
Yeah.
Based on what I've been hearing.
Yeah, and my question is still out there. Are we doing the ninety day? Or sixty day? Because Melissa had said that, you know, going back and forth and having these issues that maybe now we need, you know, need to change it to sixty days. And she explained that then any one-offs that come through after, then you guys will just have to make those changes. But is that really what's happening, the sixty days or is it ninety? So I can at least let the employees know, you know, hold off for sixty days or hold off for ninety days.
So it's truly up to you, but that credit only gets applied one time.
Yeah.
So we can't, we can't go back and pick anything up retroactively. The credit either gets applied after sixty days or after ninety days, which is why ninety days is usually the best way to go. That makes sure while Wellmark pays claims very quickly and sixty days in theory is probably enough to catch ninety-five percent of claims. I, I would venture to speak, I don't ever want to speak for Wellmark, but you know, we like to, we like to have that ninety-day window because it just allows for the most employees to get the maximum credit and the least disruption. And after that point, there's no, no additional credit. We can't go back and grab anything, it's a one-time credit.
I rolled down ninety days.
Would it be helpful, would it be helpful to put out a memo to employees? Where, you know, when, when you were being on-boarded and so forth, there's a lot of moving parts. There's a lot of changes, a lot of information at one time. Maybe we put out a memo that just addresses this, this runout that says, you know, hey, we're forty-five days into the plan, we're halfway there, just don't forget that we're, we're holding claims at the EBS level until we get to that ninety days. So to, we want to ensure that you all have appropriate credit. Yeah, we could also, Holmes Murphy, we could also get a claims lag report from Wellmark to see where that's at. Keith, you're shaking your, I already thought of that. So yeah, we could, we could do that as well, but I think it makes some sense to, to communicate and not assume the employees remember.
Yes, I think that'd be great because we have a handful of employees here, it's going to be hard to get. So if you would do that, that would be great. And then if they have questions from there, they'll just know that we're taking care of those concerns and the ball is rolling and there's been some changes. And I think this meeting was very successful and thankful to everybody that came to hear how things have changed and how we're going to change it back and make it more user-friendly for our employees. So I think we had a, a public hearing at ten o'clock that we were supposed to take. So yeah, which is, this was very important, we knew it was going to, so if anybody's here for the public hearing, we're, we're still going to have that.
Questions still up and talking.
If you have a specific question, a specific thing, let's take it on a one-on-one. Yep, on a one-on-one, and let's go from there. Thank you, Denise, thank you, Jennifer. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Yep, we will all be in contact, this is not completely over, but thank you for your time, really appreciate it.
Let us know, we're always happy to jump on a call.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Can you help that?
Yep, we're going to go on a one-on-one with the specific concerns because not one explanation fitting everybody's individual scenario that has happened since the switch-over. It was supposed to be seamless. I think we made great progress today with getting that changed back. So anybody that has a specific concern.
He's already paying, though.
Amy will be.
Something eating into your system, it's got to wait forty-five days. If you think one of us is in here, you owe her six grand.
No, I don't know about that, because that's, I talked to him.
Yep.
And I'll, I'll, it's me and you.
That would be.
It'd be good to know.
Just pleased to have you guys watching, that's Amy, I mean, we don't want to see the way it's going on with this deal. I mean, we got a good group of employees, we don't want to meet people confused and upset.
Over, you know, over our heads.
Because they said you took the fifteen hundred dollars.
And we don't see it all.
And you notice the change, which you guys have addressed, but it was very missing.
It was, and and for me, you know, I'm not, I'm not on the insurance, so it's really hard. I, I took notes trying to.
Well, and I think to be fair to them.
Yes.
That thing that we had, that wasn't in anywhere, they had no idea.
That's right.
So that's when I, when I figured out what was happening, I went for them and they're changing it. So it's one of those things.
Absolutely.
Deals twenty years ago.
And thank you, Amy, for taking the time and getting through all the weeds and just figuring it out. But we fixed it and it's all good. And they're going to go back and now we know that those claims are going to be paid. They just can only get those credits once, and so I think.
I was going to add, I think it's really important as they do this memo, they have that, you know, they, that generally really good job. I think that's right, yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's important is to make it very intuitive, very easy to understand for people to understand it, you know? You have the in-office and then you have the, the, you have the inpatient outpatient.
Right.
Different things over here that are going on, so it, it all makes sense. And then the other thing is this ninety days, that's just throwing the wrench in everybody's mind. I mean, it is, but, but people, if they understand that and then they're patient, it'll all work its way out.
Yeah, like it's always hard for somebody to get billed and like, oh, I just got to sit there on this.
And we can have doctors' offices calling.
Oh, yeah.
You know, wanting their money, that's the problem.
I mean, I didn't do that yet, and I think, you know, in a practical matter, a lot of times you don't get a bill for ninety days because it takes that long to process the insurance. But, but I wanted to add one thing, I'm going to give you guys some of these, this, this is my budget, budget summary for the last one since twenty twenty-two. But I want to give credit to the board and to Amy because, you know, the old plan didn't exist anymore. I mean, we didn't have an option to go with the old plan. And so they found this plan and this is costing a lot more money. You know, health insurance has gone up.
It's gone up.
And just in the secondary road department, twenty twenty-two, this is an actual cost for health insurance for the employees, for the department. This is what the employees pay, this is what the department paid, it was three hundred and thirty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-one dollars. This fiscal year that we're currently in, I budgeted five hundred and twenty thousand and it's going to be six hundred and seventy-five thousand because the insurance changed. So that's more than a doubling of the church cost to the department in three years. And so, you know, I know there's confusion here and this is what I tell people is just be patient, it'll all work out. But they've been trying to find a plan that we can afford and it's still going up considerably. And we, employees are paying more as well.
Well, right.
You know, and so, you know, to their credit, they're trying. And so, you know, I know Amy's catching a lot of crap, a lot of people.
Thank you, Amy.
And I appreciate what she's done, but, but it isn't easy. It, it really isn't. It sounds like, what I heard here today, I could answer a lot of questions and I hope Amy somehow communicate that to everybody else through this memo or through talking to people.
Keep the communication going and not be a many concerned.
You guys, do you share?
All right. Thank you, Amy.
You know.
All right. All right, is, we go right into the public hearing.
What's that?
I'll talk to you later about it.
Is anybody here for the public hearing?
Who's standing for the public hearing?
You have to sign in.
Are you standing for the hearing?
Yep, to sign in.
To sign in.
Because we don't have to pay your call.
We also, whoever's on Zoom.
Well, after this then, I mean, I need you to sign in.
Sure, I'm just, what are you telling me to do?
You know, I mean, it all makes sense. And as I look at my claims and say, boy, it's exactly what's going on.
I'll make a motion to open it.
All right, we have a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
We have a second.
Thank you.
Any discussion, otherwise we need a motion to open the public hearing or a vote, all favor aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so in the public hearing, if you are on Zoom, we need to have you identified so we can sign you in, otherwise we will have to sign you out for the public hearing and we will have to sign you back in.
We'll get the folder.
After, oh. After the public meeting, so jail, we need to know who the person is for the public hearing, otherwise we have to go out. Thank you, all right. Cindy, I'm going to assume Cindy. Yep, that's Bonnie from the, Bonnie, Bonnie.
Bonnie.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Bonnie from the attorney's office?
Bonnie from the attorney's office, Jake Segabart, Cindy Kudoff. Those people sign in. All right, thank you very much. All righty, so our public hearing is to exchange property owned by the respective parties lying within the city of Manala, Crawford County property lots nine and ten block, twenty-one, city of Manala. Five and six block, twenty-one, city of Manala. Do we have any written or oral objections?
Part of the plan with the billing on the new shop, that this all came together, back and forth, they wanted your old shop, we just had to tear it down. They gave us a plan to build a new shop on. This is something that's just.
It really has been a win-win.
It's a nice shop.
I don't, I haven't heard any, I haven't heard, I haven't had anybody contact me that.
We have no written or oral objections. So just need to go out of the public hearing?
Yep.
All right.
I'll make that motion, go out of the public hearing. Say it.
Take the discussion, I'll call a vote, all in favor aye?
Aye.
Yeah, same sign. All right, we're out of the public hearing. I'm not signing that.
It's your authority to sign it.
All right, yep, we got a resolution, we'll come back to this.
But I will make a motion to approve the resolution twenty-eight, twenty-four dash thirty, authorizing charity signs, playing the transfer lots of city of Manala. Second.
All right, it's a resolution, I'll call individual votes. Kyle?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Ty?
Aye.
All right, your votes aye. A resolution has been approved.
Tell me, motion second?
Uh huh.
Yeah, on the revolution, thank you. Penn's smoking. I need to stamp that.
All right.
You need a cooler, Finn?
You're all right. I don't know that that will help. It'll be all right. All this, wow.
Yeah.
Open window ups.
All right, sign that. All right, we've got that taken care of. Still, oh, what else do you have for your other?
You'll also need to sign the deed. At some point. And then I'll need to get a copy of that.
All right. Who is?
Oh, you know what? That one, no, I can have you sign that one. They've been having room to record it. Have to sign.
I thought you sent us the one with.
We did, but it just couldn't print out that way.
Oh, it didn't?
There should be room up here to.
Someone probably thought that.
To record it, so. Here, let's just put this together because there'll be two sheets here. There you go. And then once you get that recorded, Terry, just give me a copy.
Okay, I'm recording it?
Probably will, we will probably report that for that. Want me to?
I have one somewhere.
Once it's signed up here.
I signed it, who's the notary?
My office, but I don't authorize.
All right.
Just get it down to me. I'll take it from there.
Got it.
Both that for a resolution.
Lot of moving parts and papers today.
Yeah, those were, yes, let's just get rid of. And this, you need to get a copy of this too.
As far as I can tell, I'm looking at the bottom.
I guess you want back to date. Keep that one, keep that one.
Okay, Ty.
We got two demons at the table. You don't need more than two cards per person.
It's a blackjack table.
It appears to be, but I got my order to people.
Yeah, that, that.
Yeah, thanks for that information, that was.
I just think it's important for everybody to understand that, that, you know, there's been a lot of effort made to try to keep health insurance costs in check. It is, and, and, you know, and so there's going to be a few growing pains here, but, you know, a lot of questions got answered. I have to be honest, at this point, if insurances don't break this country, I'll be impressed.
Well, certainly. Our liability property, about fifty percent.
Yeah, but I mean, they, they can only exist, they can only exist, you know, and I'm paying, that's all, unless claims, then they take in premiums. Okay, and when the claims go up.
And with all of them, what? And with all the bastards or whatever.
A lot of people are not going to get insurance, no, you're probably talking.
Well, it's part of the equation.
There you are.
Yes, that's a problem, that's a big part of it. But hopefully this will put a lot of these.
We don't know how much of the, what are we going to give the cable? I think we need to call Kim and find out what. Do you know the answers to the public health deal? We'll talk about it. Doesn't say how much.
So yeah, I don't have a whole lot of items here, I mean Dixon Construction, there's more in the chorus lab, the last floor section this morning, or, you know, excuse me, two o'clock afternoon. Looks good, it's just, yeah. To see it's a little faster. Doing a very good job.
I do get, I guess, from the public at least on Fifty-Nine South. What, what's the timetable?
I got to call him to find out, the box is all set, but I haven't got an update here yet this week, but you know, they have till the twenty-eighth of August, which is next week. You know, if they get done a day before that, it's a five thousand dollar bonus if they get a day. Okay, if they get done after that, it's a five thousand dollar equity of damage. Okay, if they get done after that, it's a five thousand dollar liquidated damages, so there's a fairly significant incentive, in my opinion, to get it done on time, so I'm, I'm hopeful that it's.
You ever been down there to see where they're, where they're at?
Not recently, I haven't, no, but, uh, I try to stay out of there, just kinda like ten street. I'm waiting for that to open up too, but, uh, it's hard to get to our house sometimes, if you're.
It's a long time.
Yeah, um, but I, I'll, I'll find out, I'll, I'll just shoot you all the text, and let you know what the latest is on that, so.
My past experience working for a contractor and such like that, they don't bring the necessary resources in to get done by prior to, or at least the day of completion, they don't want to be paying all liquidated.
Yeah, they do not wanna be paying liquidated damages, so there was, there's an incentive there to get done early, which is.
Call them liquidated damages?
They call them liquidated damages, yeah, it's a, it's a payment that you make if you don't get done on time, and it's assessed on a daily basis.
Two summers that I did work with the drivers, and you could tell when it was getting close to crunch time, because the crews all went to one job and worked on it.
Yeah, we did.
Could the weather's been, uh, working out where we can't, and on the weather?
It has, yeah, yeah, it's been good working conditions. Oh, I know it is, I know, and, you know, now they're getting course on bridges south of town over the railroad, you know, and that's the twenty-seven, twenty-eight project, and that'll be a bridge closure. I'm sure they'll probably move it all to one bridge and have one lane traffic on, on one of the others, they replace the other on it, so. Uh, it's part of continuing to improve our infrastructure, and unfortunately, it comes with some inconvenience, so. Uh, it's better than crossing a river in a wagon and with horses. I'm. Saying, they didn't have a cell phone to call me, I stopped. Gravestone mate, they're going back to the eighteen seven, so. Uh, great crew, they're over at J Avenue, and I was over there yesterday, that, man, they just doing a fantastic job, and continue to work over there. Bridge crew doing pavement patching on, uh, L fifty-one, they finished sixteen, actually, they're over on, uh, west, uh, by West Side today, and they can do one, uh, down there on, um, yeah, fifty-five. North of Manala, that means west section of them there, and they go over to L fifty-one, got quite a bit of patching, they're gonna be working on there, roadside crews, uh, mountain spring, uh, seeding, mowing, getting ready for the holiday weekend year coming up, uh, and then, um, the auctions today. Have much on there, a couple pickups and a few planting stuff, and then next week on Thursday, we're having our safety meetings.
That's the coolest I've ever seen.
There's a cell phone out there, you know, like JR told me, he told me, he said, you know, the last several weeks, they've been having stuff come in, and it just sold, you know, on a Saturday sale, he said, we'd add all that stuff, he said, we'd be there. Till tomorrow morning, till Wednesday morning at nine o'clock.
You think that sale would, the first five years, and then it would just, just.
It'd be throughout.
Yeah.
I swear some of them wagons have been sold ten times.
Randy Crease, you know, did all the mouthfuls, sailed, he held that hole up one time, he said, I think they sold this one ten times, I mean, no, I learned out too.
Oh goodness, so, and again, thanks, you know, I know you.
We're trying.
It's been, and that, and that's what people have to understand.
Yeah.
You know, everybody does, that, we don't like it any more than anybody else.
I do feel like we've got a good team.
That's really.
Paul Murphy and, and the I C G P.
They sort of like game.
So, so who were Jennifer and Denise, so?
They were with.
I, I.
I G H C, I H.
Iowa, Iowa Healthcare Group, yeah.
Well, I G H C.
That's, that's our new, that's where our pool is, right?
Yep, that's where we bought our plan from.
So is it like a community, like a governmental entity pool?
Yeah, yeah, like region pool is part of it, and other counties and cities and school.
Okay, yeah.
So, uh, before I like to tip up, we step in and talk to you about, uh, A Avenue, headed to Ida Row. Uh, so, he, he said that you guys worked together with Ida County to, to work on that road, A A V A N U.
We did a trade project on two miles, a long time ago.
Two miles of dirt.
Yeah, two miles of dirt.
He said the weeds out there are terrible, there's sunflowers, uh, that's not your problem, but he said that you guys probably need to run a grader on it, and he said Ida County. Said they've done what they need to do, so he was gonna kind of try to be here today, but he had another appointment, and.
Phone number?
I, I do.
Yeah.
So he just.
I'll just call him, I think those are their two miles.
Okay, he.
Is that the one where they broke the front end of the tractor up?
I unfortunately did not have.
You have to remind me of that, don't you?
I just remembered, I just remembered, because I'm not that search, two miles, because they had help running our equipment.
Two, six, nine.
We had the equipment they had brought up.
Nine, six, four, eight.
Ninety-six, forty-eight, yeah, they busted the front off.
He just had some concerns about it, and, uh, I, he was gonna try to be here, but I said, if.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Jeff Coward told you, a different note of what I talked to you about, I said, Pat.
Absolutely.
I know state highway.
Michael Ru.
Yep.
I don't have his number.
Going like.
I'll text you.
He just didn't want it to become a bigger power. You don't know, but you don't know.
All right.
But they.
Very good.
Thank you, Paul, thank you for all you do, I appreciate you always trying to bring it back around.
You'll see us down there.
We're gonna skip to Taya, do you wanna come on up, and we'll pick your, uh, discussion, uh, we don't have time for any of this, or offline anyway, so.
That happens.
Let's just have you come on up and, um, record your discussion, welcome, thank you for coming.
Yes, thank you guys for having me back. It's been a year already, my goodness.
It's hard to believe, how are things going?
Good, good, it's been a crazy, busy year, as always, just as anybody's business or function, so the last time I was here, I talked to you guys a lot about prevention and expanding that.
Manning.
So we have added, trying to figure out where I last updated you, we did add a full-time prevention person. Um, so, and she was here at one point with me, um, but I, I've brought her up before, but so we did have a full-time prevention, this is not the person behind me, now I'm dragging some nurses down this rabbit hole with me, so this is one of our house supervisors, Macasia, but, uh, I always like to expand and do some things, so I'm starting to drag some nurses into our fun, um, but, so we did hire a full-time prevention person, um, she reached out to all the schools last year, um, in multiple counties. Uh, last year, we got into Maple Valley, Anthenoto, and we did education through six through eight.
Yeah.
Fifth rate, I meant fifth rate, I think we did go down a year for them, um, we did education with fifth through eight on different introductions into concerns, you know, with alcohol, substance abuse, things like that, a lot of nicotine, mostly stuck to alcohol and tobacco in the younger ages, and those risks. In the Denison School, we met with all the teachers in middle school and high school, and did education on Narcan vapes, um, and education with some of the drug trends that we were seeing last year. And that has obviously branched into some other things that they're looking for, so we're currently working on some of that stuff, but, um, and then we also.
Well, if you don't mind me just interrupting you, but when you, when you do train teachers like that, is there an expectation then that the teachers take that information and go to the students, or is this strictly?
It's teacher education, yep.
Okay.
So we've tried to, we offer different things, but we've tried to adapt whatever we do to what the school's looking for, and, um, a lot of the schools are having issues with vapes, this is nothing new. Um, and that, that wasn't smoking when we were younger, now it's vapes, so that's a never-ending issue and concern, and so, just trying to help them learn what to look out for, because one, hidden vapes are really easy to get. Um, we have a full variety of what we call hidden vapes at the recovery center that we show people, one of them's a coffee mug, and when we go in and teach, we plant them in different places, but, uh, we have a highlighter, coffee mug, desk drive, little zip drive, a couple different options, inhaler, that are vapes, but they don't look like vapes.
Really?
And so we tend to, like, um, Nika, when she goes and does, does these educations myself, we hide them in different places, just to see if the teachers can pick up on it, so they can kinda like this, you know, those aren't being targeted to the adults who can legally vape at their job if they want to, this is targeting our children, who need to hide these things. Um, so, we, we kinda tailor it to each of the school, but the vapes and, um, kinda introduction into what substances we're seeing in the air, this population, and signs of misuse or abuse, um, even nicotine. If anybody, myself included, isn't used using nicotine, and you use it, it will make you, and you use it more than just like a cigarette's not gonna do it, but if you're using the nicotine and gum and stuff, it can give you kind of like ADHD symptoms. And educating the teachers on signs to look for, and then the resources that they can have, you know, who in Denison is your, is your go-to, or any school, is your go-to if you have concerns about your child, helping them set up that progress, and then what resources we can offer, um, from Manning, to help with that child or the family that might be in need and may have been missed. Um, so, yes.
Do they still smoke cigarettes at all anymore?
Oh, yes.
This was, you know, you just don't see that like you used to.
You don't see it as much, because the vapes are easier to hide.
Okay.
But yes, there are still plenty of teenagers smoking.
Okay, I just was hoping that the word got out that don't start.
Either, either, they're both terrible for you.
They're both, yeah.
They're both terrible, adults, we also do them too, so.
See a lot of.
Yeah, yep, yep, I see a lot of it, um, I mean, I, goodness, I bet ninety percent of my patient population vapes, so, um, it's a thing, it's just, sometimes pick the lesser of two evils in your life, if that's what's gonna keep something that's more detrimental to your life out of your system, okay, fine, whatever, but hoping to educate some of these children should just not start it.
Yeah, don't start.
Just don't start, um, so we spent a lot of time last year working on developing the prevention, and letting people, the schools know we're out there, we focused a lot of the schools last year. Um, I think total at the recovery center, we got into sixteen school districts, um, two being in Crawford County, um, three, I lied, we were West Side, uh, our, see, some of these school districts that cross over in the county, as I have to think.
Did you get into Denison?
Yes, so we, what, but the teachers is where we started, and we're still developing that, um, so at the beginning of the school year, Nika spent the summer talking to guidance counselors, the nurses, those are kind of the people that we've realized are the ones to work with, to develop, and so the guidance counselors, they have special time with the kids, and that seems to be a time that we're able to work with the children without affecting their school day. So, just kinda working on what the next year looks like, so we spent a lot of time last year talking to teachers, administrators, the adults, um, some schools had us in the kids first, some did the teachers first, just trying to figure out how this works into the school districts. Um, so still working on that, Nika spent the summer reaching back out to those people, and are starting to schedule dates already for this year of what can we do, what can we offer, and can we get into your curriculum or your school, uh, in those timeframes, so we've just kinda said last year, getting our, our prevention name out there, um, and into those aspects, yeah, yeah.
They get caught vaping at school, is that, is there punishment for that?
Each school district is different, um, that I've learned, some of them have start with an detention versus suspension, um, some schools have asked us to come in and talk to those children.
Okay.
And do some education, that's what we've kinda offered is, I mean, yeah, sitting in detention in school is boring, but let's, let us come in for thirty minutes and educate them.
Free, smoke free, you know, if, if even an adult is going by the school.
Only on the school property.
Oh, yes.
Yep, you cannot control public, the, to acknowledge the public, but yes, technically, the whole schools in the state of Iowa are tobacco-free.
Okay.
So that does include vapes, uh, depending on how the signage is posted, I'm sure, I think it gets tricky when it vapes, so like at the hospital, I can give you the hospital example, the hospital is considered tobacco-free in Iowa, but vapes don't count, so you can vape on the hospital property. But you cannot smoke or use tobacco or alcohol product.
Really?
But nicotine is not a, they're, they're not considered a tobacco product.
Oh, my.
So we can, you can vape on hospital property, um, but you can't smoke on hospital property.
Did they change that signage so you can?
Well, I don't know that answer here, but that is a way of.
I digressed, all right.
Yeah, I don't know that answer, uh, probably would, my, my other thought process is, is like the battle, you wanna fight.
Okay, all right, pick your battles.
Yeah, excuse me, trying to, nope, nope, you're fine, I, I get it, I get it, I do, I just with the recovery center, I see that challenge a lot, the vape is, it truly is a battle, I don't like to fight the recovery center.
Okay.
I feel like it's not worth my time, but we do fight it because we don't allow it, but it, uh, I spend a lot of time confiscating vapes in the recovery center, that seems to be wasted time, but.
Got it, got it.
It's always on my, it's always on my list.
I got it.
But yes, but, you know, our, our youth under twenty-one, it's, it's not legal, so trying to just educate, so we spent a lot of time focusing on teachers and the adults last year, helping them learn, and then what can they do for the children if they, especially that, there are kids that come up with concerns, and they don't know what to do, so trying to arm those teachers and counselors, the guidance counselors, kind of the big key point here on what can we do, and what services do we have in the counties.
You think it's pretty eye-opening for those teachers and guidance houses?
We, I have been absolutely shocked by the amount of questions that I have gotten, and, um, concerns that were raised to us, we booked like half hour appointments, and we never got out of a school under an hour.
Well, I see that, my, my last question, can you smell the vape when people, can you introduce to this, tell if somebody's smoking, if you can't hide it, someone could close it, you know?
Depends, so a lot of vapes typically smell like fruity stuff, so cotton candy, because that's all they sell them, is the flavors.
Oh.
So it smells like those flavors, cotton candy, apple, bubble gum, those are the big ones I see, so they smell more like, I'm someone who smokes perfume and cologne, so that they aren't as detectable, so, yeah, you just, you just never know.
All right, nevermind.
They're not as easy to detect as the cigarettes were, when you, when you don't smoke, and you can see that, you can smell it on anybody, so the vapes are getting more creative, but that's kind of where we spent our last year, is just starting to develop this program that we didn't have, we did spend a lot of money, um, on getting supplies, so, um, we purchased a large set of drunk goggles that we have used with a lot of adolescents to get. I know my children, if I can't get them hands-on, they're not gonna sit and listen to me, they are not gonna listen to me, um, so we've gotten creative on some of the ways that we talked, um, and educated some of our youth, we invested in some drunk goggles, and some trainers for Narcan, and, um, different sorts of evidence-based educational material, focused on adolescents to guide our lectures and stuff like that, so we did spend a lot of time doing that, and developing kind of what we're seeing in our counties with what we get from the state, so just spend a lot of time on that, some of the changes that we need to make, um, is, we need to expand more. We realize that even though we're local, a lot of places don't realize we're there, and some of that falls on me, so, um, increasing the, the fact that people don't realize we're here to help. Um, I started working with Shelby County Public Health a lot, Anna Shorty reached out to me over there, her and I met at their supervisors meeting, and realized we're both working at the same battle, why are we, why are we not working together? Um, so with that being said, I also have reached out to Crawford County's Public Health recently, and, um, starting, you know, things like, um, the Denison, and I'm saying this wrong, nights up on Main Street, like, public health head booths up there and things up there that we were not at, so.
Hot summer nights.
Hot summer nights, thank you, yes, I knew I wasn't saying it right.
We didn't worry about it.
But those types of things, just even getting out there more in the public's eye, to, one, know that, we don't, you don't have to go to the school to get to us, like, anybody, the doctor's office, we have been coming over to Crawford County more to cover some of their evaluation assessments with Rose Prince being done, so we are covering those, Nika does go over those and do those when the ER gives us a call. Um, they said they'd had some patients that were sitting in the ER for four to five days, waiting for an email, when we're thirty minutes away. So, uh, we did make that connection, met with the CEO over there and a couple other people, and now if they've got that point where their contracted person can't get over there, we'll come over and do those. Um, and typically, we can meet that in twenty-four hours versus four to five days, that's just a burden on the hospital and that patient, that's, nobody needs to be sitting in the ER and using our resources for four to five days. So just, just those types of connections, you know, with Jackson being here, there was no reason for us to be stepping on something that was already here, so now just trying to also, you know, figure out all these places that we're not at. Um, so like I said, I reached out with, uh, the leader in public health, and I know quite a few of the nurses that work over there, why have not thought to say, hey, what can we do for you, where, where's the lack, um, you know, looked at your programs, there's nothing in regards to Narcan or those types of things, can we supplement that?
In that school, okay, then.
We just started this conversation, um, that's a new one, so. Perfect, perfect, but, so we had a good conversation yesterday, um, we are also, so we've never been to the Crawford County Coalition, that wasn't something we crossed over into, because Jackson was here, so we will be attending that this afternoon, and starting making sure our presence there is also available. Um, I don't know if anybody goes to that, but, um, you know, that, that's a nice meeting of all the resources in the county, so just trying, so the next year, in addition to what we've been doing, we need to focus a little bit better on our networking, and making sure that the people of Crawford County know that we're there, with Jackson being gone, that we're here to supplement those services to the best of our abilities, um, so we're gonna spend some time focusing on that. Um, the last thing with that being said is, one of the areas that I felt like was lacking was education with my staff, um, I have great staff that are taught on, they're, they're taught how to be addiction counselors, but with that comes PTSD, that comes trauma, anxiety, depression, it's not just addiction anymore, it never has been, and why that was separated from mental health, I don't know. Um, and I, I think I've kinda preached that ever since I've been in this role, is behavioral health is one aspect, we've hit a lot of barriers with that in the, in, in the past, so, um, my next, my goal this next year is also to increase the training with some of my staff, um, one of the things that was brought up in the last meeting I had with you guys was veterans. Um, so I am working, hopefully, to get two to three of my staff trained specifically in veteran PTSD, and trauma training for that, that all comes with expenses and monies, so that's kind of where we're looking at budget-wise, if.
We went out to like Louise and the different VA directors.
I called Louise a few days ago and left a voicemail, so I'm hoping to hear from her soon.
You will.
I know she's, she's pretty busy, but the last time I talked to her, she was pretty responsive, but yes, so, looking to see, um, there is a VA program in Adair County, and so I, um, kinda watching what they do a little bit too, but they do have a specialized, specialized VA program in their substance addiction, I try to focus on the fact that we don't need to duplicate everything, because if we're all doing the same specialized program, well then we're wasting funds and wasting money, and wasting resources, so more of education for the VA patients that we see, we do take TRICARE in Manning, so we do get some patients that are on TRICARE, but we, the VA doesn't pay for our program if they don't have TRICARE.
Louise is right downstairs and I know she's in today, so.
Okay, she was not there when I walked in, but.
She's having that suicide prevention thing over in the conference room.
Okay, I say she was, I did stop by on my way in and she was not in there. But, but, so just, just trying to expanding, um, my, my, my staff's education, making sure that those who we are training, if we're looking at getting out to more adolescents, do we have enough adolescent training? Uh, recently, Nika, our brand coordinator, since she's along, working with all these adolescents and doing a lot of training. We did have her trained in the, um, so my staff are trained in the mental health first aid, but we had her trained as an instructor to offer more of those classes. Um, so that she can do that and she is gonna start, she, we have the first school booked this year that she's gonna teach that, so she was trained as an adult instructor a few months ago, I had her trained as a juvenile instructor this last month. Um, but, you know, those, those funds are expensive, those classes aren't cheap, um, things like that, and then, and we don't, we don't charge for that. So, should we, should we not, I don't know. What's the best, you know?
Best if you can.
Yes, correct, so, so, so far we haven't, because the, the point is to be able to help our community, not, but we still have to keep the doors open.
Right.
So trying to, to, to work that balance of, so far, we have not charged for any education that we do, we don't charge for any of, the only thing that we do have to charge for is those evaluations that we do at the Crawford Hospital, because that is illegal, like, with that service, we do have to charge for that. Um, but we have a, what I feel is a very low fee compared to what I've seen other places charge, because it's still our community, it's a local hospital, we're working with, so um, those types of things, but outside of that, everything that we do for prevention and education is free to the schools, is free to the community, and we try and keep that the best that we can in that form. And so far, we've been able to do that because, one, we've gotten some great sponsors in the counties with the opioid funding and we've gotten some of that money to be able to offset so far the prevention fees. Um, and have been lucky enough to do that, now I know those are only ten-year commitments, but for now, it's where it goes and hopefully insurances will pay decently one of these years that, that would offset.
Insurance, yeah.
Some more stuff.
Would you say that ninety percent of, uh, what you're doing is through the opioid funds or financed through the opioid funds or?
At least, yes, yeah, with the prevention, yes. So some of the stuff, um, that Nika does is in prevention, that is not funded through the opioid funding. Um, what I've talked to the counties was completely prevention related, so we've only used it prevention, so that we make sure that we're clear upfront, transparent. Uh, from what I've looked at, the opioid funding can be used for anything that substance abuse related that we do in Manning does qualify. So, um, what kind of the thing that we're looking at this year is if you, as a county board, get to the point where nobody else is asked for the opioid funding, we could definitely use some, some funding for education in addition to the prevention, um, I did reach out to Rolling Hills for some of the funding for the education, but with the changeover that has been declined.
Yep.
Um, but, that's okay, it doesn't hurt to ask, you know?
No, no.
Never hurt to ask, um, the juvenile training that I had Nika do last month was twenty-three hundred dollars um, that we paid for, I was hoping that Rolling Hills would reimburse that, but completely understand where that's at and that just didn't work, so it was something that wasn't budgeted, but I know Amy, Amy just loves when I come at her, the CFO with those types of things, so we'll, we'll offset that, but.
How long do they expect the opioid funding to get to you?
Hey, my sixteen years?
Sixteen, eighteen, I think. Yeah, and some of it's less, parts of it are less than that, but.
Those last couple of years are significantly less.
It varies a little bit every year.
And that's why I remember we did a percentage amount rather than a dollar amount, because of those variations.
So a percentage of our balance, is that what, I can't even remember.
It was fifty percent of, um, the income that year, fifty percent of the committed funds for that year, for ten years. Is the, the written out stuff that we did with, with Crawford County.
I couldn't remember, um. Cause we did kind of, it was a weird amount last year.
Yes.
It was kind of the remaining of our balance.
Yep, 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 and I'm not sure, I assume it's fiscal year, but I shouldn't assume that, I really don't know if it's January to January, if it's fiscal year, like most of us run.
Right.
How the funding comes in, I don't know.
Right, we just got a bunch recently and we're over eighty thousand currently in our fund, but some of that, I think, did carry over from last year, I don't remember. I meant to bring that stuff, but I was, got busy this morning before the meeting.
So we just take our total then at the end of our fiscal year on June thirtieth and whatever we got in for funding?
Well, that's up to you all, I mean, if you wanna do, do it now and then evaluate it at the end of the year, you know, if you haven't had any requests. You know what I mean, yeah, it's kind of.
If nobody requests the funding, we could definitely supplement things and use things, and Manning, obviously, we're never gonna turn down funding, because there's always, there's always something to be done. Um, our just biggest goal is making sure that I'm transparent with you guys and let you know where that money is.
Right, and then when I file, I, I called Taya before, to get help to make sure that I'm, um, noting in the funding, you know, the reporting part, what they're actually using it for, to make sure we're
Yep.
consistent with that.
One of the other awful things with this prevention, I learned this last year, so for the first year, I went with Nika, um, the two of us went and did all the prevention trainings, and I realized the amount of questions that come from the adults and children is phenomenal, which is great, but it does require a medical person to be there, it's more beneficial for a medical person to be there, and I can't do that myself. Hence the nurses that are now dragging down this rabbit hole with me. Um, so if I can't be there, because there are a lot of things that I have goals for in Manning here recently that we're trying to increase and trying to do, um, in, in the substance abuse world that I need to be available for, so I'm gonna take just a handful of nurses that I know can handle the extra uh, on put whenever they're and train them in what I teach, most of it is just my background in the ER, just like they are.
Yeah.
That we learn to be able to answer those questions. Nika's, her background, she does have an EMT background, but her education is focused on substance abuse, so she can answer those questions, but when they're asking, you know, we do offer that Narcan training, because we just need to get it out there more, when they ask them the medical questions, then there's a nurse there to answer those as well.
Excellent.
So we're, we're expanding that part.
I do think even like in school setting with the teachers and the guidance counselors, that, you know, it was talked about at one time, do you give that money directly to the school? Then it's on their shoulders, who do we find to even bring in and talk to us about this, who's the expert, we're not the experts. Where this is a great fit, because they come in and they have all the information, that's what they do, it's, and then they.
I can about imagine the questions they have, I got like all these questions.
I have been impressed, I have been impressed, and so I've, we've learned and we're now scheduling hour blocks.
Yeah, no, no, no.
With the schools, even with the kids, they've been very inquisitive and, and you know, we're just making sure we guide it to their love age level. That we also need to teach them things they shouldn't be knowing yet at that age.
I know.
So, that, my mom's background helps with that a little bit.
Yep.
But just making sure that we're, we're being appropriate, we're being useful and that, that we also are making sure those children and the, the adults know that these services are here.
Appreciate it very much.
So, just, just trying to do that, um, we are hoping to do some increase in services. Um, I just had, we had University of Iowa down talking to all my providers yesterday about Suboxone, I use Suboxone in my practice all the time at Manning, but, um, it's a great resource out there for addiction, we don't have a major Suboxone clinic in the, in our area, um, Bevan Orfing, sorry, I probably shouldn't use the name brand, but um, those types of things and kind of, that's, that's another area that I feel like there's a bigger need than what we have and hoping to expand that soon too.
Very good.
But we have, yeah, lots of things going on, so just trying to make sure that we focus on a couple of things at a time, so we're not biting off too much and missing out on some holes that we're not covering.
Terry, do you remember as far as, so, the funds go what's required by us, how much we spend each year or? Yeah, just hold it, sit, hold on, John.
Right, no, you wanna expend them, no, I don't know what the requirement is, to be honest. I mean, obviously, we can't overspend that balance, but, right, but, but, uh. I think we budgeted about sixty thousand, cause not really knowing exactly how much was coming, um, how much we'd carry over and things like that, not that the carryover helps, it doesn't help anybody, because it just sits in the back.
We need to get it out, get the right knowledge.
So, yeah, I think last year we, um, gave, it was over fifty thousand.
It's about fifty-five thousand.
Was it fifty-five?
Just about fifty-five thousand, thank you, which was a huge, huge.
And we're setting at over eighty thousand currently, so.
Yeah, so, we did get some, a little bit of support from Audubon and Shelley, Shelley, we did receive the funds from, there was a one-time payment, yeah, Shelley was a one-time payment. Audubon, um, they were significantly less, they didn't get as much money, um, but we've not seen those funds yet, I'm still working with them on that, and last to my knowledge, Carol has not spent any of theirs.
Because you're, uh, in Crawford County and because we don't have Jackson's recovery anymore and our, uh, citizens are using your services, it makes sense that we continue.
Those are the four counties that kind of sit between, so we've kind of just focused in on that area, but we spend most of our time in Carroll and Crawford County.
We've actually talked about having a satellite site in Denison.
We did.
To take over the gap of Jackson.
A large cost analysis on that and.
It just was not at the time, or you still think at the time feasible for us.
Financially, it just, uh, probably why Jackson and many other allied services have closed is even with just two staff up here, one full-time, one part-time, we couldn't financially make it work with reimbursement rates.
And I think you guys really dug deep to see.
We spent months on it, I was even up here working with the law office on, you know, what the room would cost us and what the furniture would cost us and looking at everything, we spent a lot of time on it. Um, just trying to figure out if it was even something we could break even doing, and it, we couldn't even break even.
Yeah, we get it, we get it.
Now, with that said, if the behavioral health districts change and that there becomes more of a sustainable
Outlook.
Outlook that we can financially do it at even a break even, there's, could reopen that door, it's not completely shut.
Well, it's just something on the, on the list that we've been watching, ideally, probably my highest goal is to expand our residential program. Um, but, you know, anytime, anytime you're building a building, as you know, nothing is cheap and, um, I've spent a lot of time with politicians last two years trying to see what the state's using their opioid funding for, like, can we get a grant for this? They do have an actual grant out there currently, but it maxed out at three million. That's not building us another wing.
No.
Um, not even close, unfortunately, and I not a contractor by any means, but I do know three million's not gonna cut it to get us one more wing, even just to get us another wing is what I would love to see, and.
Cause we are pulling people from all over the state and we have been in direct contact with Kelly Garcia.
Yep.
For services, many times, so.
Just trying to reach out.
Walking away and just let everybody.
Somebody, you know, for somebody out there that has that extra ten million on hand, they wanna get rid of. They've got a great use for it.
We will put our ear to the ground on that one, so, we appreciate it very much and whatever we can do.
Any other questions I can answer or?
I've got a hundred of them, but, uh.
I always have email and always, always answer things by email, we very much appreciate you guys' support and your funding um, and doing our best to make sure we, we keep using that in a positive way for our community. Um, there are lots of things, like I said, currently this year, not only continue the prevention that we're doing, but adding a little bit, better education for my staff, so far, that's about twenty-five hundred, twenty-three hundred dollars of fees, um, there are a couple of conferences coming up that we are gonna make sure that we get to and, um, work that into our budget somehow, but if we can offset it with extra opioid funding, that does make things a little bit easier on us, so.
Just remember, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure any day, so. Might, might feel like it's falling on dead ears, but
Yes.
I still think about when I was back in elementary school, them people coming and putting them presentations on, they're still there, you know?
Even if it helps one person, that makes one, one, one person, one change, so.
Keep up the good work.
Absolutely, appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you.
So you're gonna continue to work with Terry then on pocketing those funds, that fifty percent of the funds.
Okay, it's on here to take action, I didn't know if you wanted to do something, or if you wanna.
Are they two separate different things, I mean, with the fifty percent, and then if we do additional, or?
I would, you did talk about that last year.
A lot of motion last year.
Right, I mean, I don't think we have to take action on that.
Okay, no, that's fine, we can go ahead and do that, and if you want to evaluate it, maybe after budgeting time, we can see what that fund balance looks like and.
Let's take one step first, see what we're at, with what we've already.
At the end of the day.
Just in case we do get more requests.
Yeah.
I mean, the money's still there and.
We've been very limited on who's requesting, I've been sending.
Right, right. We can have more than happy to come back at any point to give updates or anything.
The link currently, Terry, do we send them?
It was about this year, about this time of the year last year, within the fall, so that's why I kind of came across it in some of my meandering through things and it's like, oh, I'm gonna email.
Done last year, you'll just look at the, all the funding dollars that we received from, what, last July one to now or January?
Look at the fund balance and see what it is. It's, I know it's over eighty thousand currently.
Yep.
Um, we just got about four or five deposits in from, uh, the different avenues that we receive opioid funds.
So our agreement did set a date that said on this date, we will give fifty percent of.
It just says annual.
So, yeah, by the end of the year, we can, you can decide if you wanna.
Is it in town, year that works better for your organization or?
We go on fiscal year budget, um, so our budget started July one.
Okay.
Um, we built a budget based on roughly fifty percent of what the fee schedule looks like with it we received from you guys last year. Um, knowing that that will potentially change, so it's not a, like a fixed budget.
Yep.
So.
It's written over the pencil.
Yes, yes.
Got it.
We have, um, you know, the hospital, anything that's a major, like, has to be done, the hospital has budgeted.
Yep.
And then the extra will allow us to do more.
Sounds excellent, you're doing a great job, and we appreciate everything.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
I'm sure we'll talk to our man soon.
Absolutely.
Thank you guys, have a great day.
Thanks.
Thank you. Alright, so we moved that.
I almost saw the paper.
Sorry, I missed Johnny. I can give you some, discussion take action, we have lots of old trailer park in Old, trailer park in Dow City. Uh, Amy has that.
Yes.
Alright, that's treasure, so.
So, um, every year we send out a lot notice and they respond to tell us how many homes are still in their park and any changes that we made, um, need to be aware of. For approximately two years, uh, Nick has been sending in that a couple of changes have been made and to try and get everything followed up. It's just slow going, okay, um. One of them that we got cleaned up, and then I, I'm gonna go back, um. So Sheri was by Olds twice on Saturday, she verified, there are only nine homes there. And he has, it's supposed to have like ten or eleven lots. But we've got three of them, I think he had twelve at one point, um, there, there are nine homes there, three of them we need to get cleared up. Um, one of them, we just wanna ask to abate the current taxes. What happened is he, the gentleman that owned the home in Deloitte, moved, owned the home in Olds Lot, moved his home to Deloitte, but didn't notify us. We found out through Nick that it got moved, so proper channels weren't followed, but now he's getting a tax notice on both. Every, as real estate in Deloitte and as a mobile home in, uh, in Dow City. So what we're asking for is his current taxes for this year that are due in September, just to abate those, because he's paying as real estate in Deloitte on that. Okay?
Amy, can you just, uh, maybe explain to me that if you own a trailer park, I guess, the county, does it tax them per lots that are in that trailer park and then, if you put a trailer on it, the the owner of the trailer gets taxed for that value, but the owner of the trailer park, he gets charged whether there's, for his lot, whether there is a place on it or not, or is he just taxed for the whole thing, the estimate?
They're taxed for the whole piece, as to whether there are homes on all of them, I'm not sure, I think that'd be a tough question.
Okay.
Cause I, I'm not sure I've ever heard the answer to that.
As we're talking about this, that bumped into my, jumped in my head.
I would guess that it's, this is how much, what is parcel, and that's whether you're using it, like, the, our new house is like a, a par, it's got a, um, title and what you use to do with your car.
You have a dollar amount on that apartment?
It is, it's a hundred and thirty dollars.
The total here. Parcel number or, uh. Or you're gonna, am I gonna get a document for them to sign? I need something.
She didn't give me copies.
Then make a copy.
Make a copy.
With a lot of copy machines in the middle.
Making, hoping to abate those taxes.
Okay, do we need any specifics on it?
Are you doing multiple, you got more than one?
I've got more than one.
Are you?
Yeah, I've got three that we need to, yeah. Okay, so this, I mean, this really was the gentleman that owned the home didn't know the proper channels, he didn't investigate, he didn't even, he didn't even talk to Nick. And Nick knew the proper channels, but it, it just didn't happen. Um, Nick caught it, so we are able to move forward and correct it, so he's not paying property taxes on two pieces of property, just on, so it's a hundred and thirty dollars that we're asking to abate for, um, tax year twenty twenty-three. Okay, um. The second one is.
We'll have it, it'll be on the paper that Amy gives us.
This old next to asking to abate these property taxes, what he had.
No, no, the owners of the mobile homes are.
Okay, alright, okay, just.
Okay, so on this one, it, Louise's, Louise probably doesn't even know that he's on the tax roll twice, in his mind, he moved this house. But we caught it because we've got two statements for Luis for the same piece of property. One is considered real estate, one's considered a home in a park. We can't bill him twice for one piece of property. Does that make sense? More sense?
He didn't let us know.
Right, right, he didn't let us know. It, this wouldn't have happened had he come in and said, or gone to Nick and said, I want to move this mobile home out of your park. And Nick would have said, go talk to the treasurer's office. This would have been avoided. Okay, we'll fix it. Alright, perfect, okay. So. I guess that's. The information you have on that one. Um, the next one is. We're trying to clean it up. This one's old. This one had a tax sale, county held tax sale certificate issued on it. June of twenty fourteen. It's, um, Oles Lot fifteen. Um, it's Travis Palmer, this is the lot. There's no home there.
Really?
And.
Fell down.
Nick turned this into us back in twenty twenty-one. But. We have to try and get a hold of Travis. I mean, in the past, to abate taxes. We've re- we've required junking certificates, the board has required a junking certificate, we can't get a hold of Travis. He's not here, he can't sign to get a title to junk it. So now we have. Twenty-three hundred and fifty dollars worth of back taxes. Uh, one thousand forty-five dollar tax sale certificate on it. We've got thirty-three hundred ninety-five dollars, but. I think the lot has actually been cleaned up, but. It's still out there, and if Nick wanted to bring in another home, this is still appears. To be a home that's delinquent in his park and it's not. It's gone.
Twenty-fourteen?
Yeah. Yeah.
So what do they use for an evaluation of the?
Mobile homes for.
Or, or the building.
Property tax mobile homes.
Is it just keep, is it the same valuation that it was back in twenty fourteen?
Um, mobile homes are taxed on square footage.
Okay.
The property tax is based on square footage, so. Fifty-eight dollars a half is what it is, what his has been. So like a hundred and sixteen dollars a year is what it is. And it'd be better if we could get that cleared up. And then if Nick does want to bring in another home, he doesn't have to fight for us figuring out how to get it in because. The computer won't let us have two homes at the same lot. I'm, yeah, I mean, there's, but obviously. Travis isn't around, you know, he has reached out to try and get a hold of Travis. We've sent notifications, every delinquent, every tax statement goes out to him, every delinquent tax notice goes out to him, every over, yep. Not, not deliverable. Uh, so we're sending, on top of everything else, we're sending out three notices to him a year and.
We're coming back.
They're coming back to us.
I'll tell you this, I don't know its exact address, but he's. Don't live in, live in another two floor.
Travis Palmer.
Okay.
Uh, and, um, because I have access to the motor vehicle records, I have pulled his motor vehicle. The address on the driver's license and send it to that address and still no response, so.
We typically, I mean, in the past, Kyle, remember, we, we required the junking certificate so that they wouldn't bring our home back in.
Right, right, um.
Well, that's when there was a trailer sit on the lot and they wanted to jump them.
Right, and this is obviously.
But just kind of, is there a way that, that we could put a judgment against that part? I mean, the twenty-three hundred dollars, I mean. How do we just forgive somebody? And no names, it doesn't matter who it is, this is just type of fitting.
Right.
Um, shouldn't we go after them and they can try to get it paid? Or at the very most, make sure that it's out there and on their record that they've done this, just up and left, to let anybody know, lets somebody hold in the bag. Uh, you have to have a consequence for bad behavior, I always feel.
I agree, but.
We'd like our money back.
Right.
I'd like our money back.
But. I mean, it's, I mean, we've been doing this since ten years.
I know.
It's ten years.
Tax sale?
Yeah, so there was a county, a county held tax sale certificate was issued twenty fourteen. But it's county held, so there was, there's no investor involved. There had been an investor involved. It would have been. Cleared up already or. I feel like it burned down after twenty fourteen. Or whatever.
When you have unpaid taxes like that, and to take Gene's point, I mean, can the county?
Yeah.
I guess take over the property or?
It's a, oh, it's, we, we can't because it's, um, um, when you, or I don't feel we can. Uh, we. What Travis was doing is he was renting the lot out off of Nick's property to have that there.
Oh, I see, Nick, Nick.
Nick, this is still in Nick's, Nick's, Nick owns, still owns the park. And, and Travis owns the home on the, right, so he paid, yeah, he paid rent to Nick. And then when it was gone. Basically, he left it for Nick to clean up, or he left and then it burned out, we don't know.
The consequence.
But, yeah, I, I wish there was a consequence, but.
It's not the land owner.
Right, 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 right.
And the county used to take deeds to some of these certificates that would go unsold.
Right.
But we don't want to own.
No.
A bunch of dilapidated property around the county. Right, and that one specifically, we can't own, but if it were typical.
I want to clean it up, but I also want to, to not just let this be okay. That you just up and leave, don't let anybody know, it, that was it, somebody should take care of it back in fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen. Let me go off with the numbers, you know?
Right, right.
But today.
We're gonna deal with it today.
Let's take care of it and straighten it out, but.
Thank you.
Going forward, I'd like to have a way to.
Tell the county attorney a question.
Have a consequence, and I think the way to have a consequence is, so if this person goes to buy something else, it's on their record out there that, hey. You left somebody hanging years ago, um. You probably should clear that up before you get to buy something new. And we see that all the time with people trying to buy houses, that, hey, you had a foreclosure, and so you have to wait seven years to buy any.
Uh, but there, I mean, there's not on vehicles though, so if we're talking about the fact that this is titled. Uh, this is titled mobile home, so. It, yeah, they did, they did, absolutely, but yep, I've got it on for talking to the county attorney.
Dollar amount, can I add for you?
Thirty-three hundred ninety-five dollars.
I already wrote it down.
Okay, what's the next one?
Number three.
Number three is, um, Lot sixteen, and I think you could see it kind of off to the side. It's on the side, there was nothing there. Um, Lot sixteen is also in Oles, um, lot. It's Jaime Rivas, he gave the title to Maynard before Maynard passed away and. Maynard never took title to it and. And now Nick is the surviving child and there's no title. And the lot's bare and Nick doesn't know when it became bare because it became bare while Maynard still owned the lot. And when Jaime left the lot, I, I've talked to him, Jaime's still around. But he says, I did what I legally had to do, I gave the title to the lot, to the, to the property owner. I gave it to the park owner and I have no responsibility to get a replacement title. Or continue paying taxes on it. So he said thirty-three hundred and thirty-nine dollars. And it took place in twenty thirteen, it's older than the other one was.
How much was it?
Thirty-three thirty-nine.
Back in my secondary road stage, we had to go clean up a mobile home that was moved out of a trailer park. And then get the bank when they're turning it over, then it all fell apart even again. That might be the one that.
Well, seriously, that's what we hear when we go to mobile home trainings and meetings. They, they move them in the dark, they pull them out in the dark. Because then they don't have to worry about roads and they don't get their permit clearances and they don't get their tax clearances and.
Today's the day we're cleaning all of them.
Any, does it ever, any responsibility lie on the mobile home lot owner like Nick? Cause I mean, I, I get it, he owns land, they're bringing up his mobile home, but yet. His business to bring him in, so, you know.
I'm not.
I mean, he wants to clean it up so he can rent it back out again.
And I will guarantee he does, I, he hasn't brought anything in. And he's down to nine homes over there, he hasn't been bringing more in, so I'm think, I feel. Personally, I feel like he's letting it go. As they go out, they're, they're just being done, but that, I don't know that, he has never said those words.
He put that storage unit out there, which I think took up some of the lots, which is probably more profitable. Right. Ran out of storage unit, less, less wear and tear.
Yep, probably more responsible people.
So, uh, let's clean it up. Uh, I got the dollar amount at about six thousand eight hundred sixty-four dollars.
Responsible. Do we want to wait a second one to see if there's something that we can do with the county attorney?
I think that even. No, my, my thought. You want our money back?
Hey, this is Sheri, I'm gonna, can I jump in quick? Um, I will put it on my note to, um, talk to Colin about that when I return. Um, but in addition to abating, I think we need the board's permission to remove these from the tax roll too. So that's the other thing we're asking in this meeting, is if we can remove all three of those as well as abate the, uh, charges that are sitting out there.
Otherwise, they're just gonna keep, every year, we're gonna deal with it again.
No, no, Jerry, what will be part of our motion?
Well, ultimately, ten years ago, if we would have cleaned them up, it wouldn't be thirty-three hundred dollars.
That's where this whole problem comes from.
Right.
The tax is something that wasn't there for ten years.
Yeah, there's just, it's just a, it's a nothing burger here, I think.
And really at a hundred and eighteen dollars a, a, a year, it's. We're not really making money.
Technically not, but it's still principal, but it's.
Like, ten, by ten years to do this. No, Nick hasn't had paid taxes. By doing this, it's a little bit of a lag on his tax a little bit, correct?
It, no, he's paying, he pays the whole piece.
He pays for the land.
Yeah, his isn't broken down at all.
So what he's missing is he's paying taxes where he used to be getting a hundred dollars for, from nineteen trailers.
Right.
He's still paying taxes, I would believe, on that same parcel and not having any income from it, but there's, you know, what is, what is it, so.
But he can't put another.
But he still won't if he.
Yep, they move up, but it also doesn't, I don't know.
Should we have a total dollar amount?
Six thousand eight hundred and sixty-four is what I got, at an end of night.
Yep, that's, sounds pretty close.
Uh, so we need a motion, uh, and that motion should approve, uh, also including taking off the tax rolls.
Dollars, six thousand eight.
Thousand eight sixty-four.
Sixty-four even?
Yep, no sense.
I'd make a motion that we, uh, bait the six thousand six hundred.
Eight hundred.
Six thousand eight hundred sixty-four dollars and remove these three properties from the tax rolls. Second.
All right, any further discussion? Now to call a vote, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Any pose, same side, chair goes aye, let's get that gone. And maybe even possibly try to figure out a way to not let this go ten years out, happen again, yes.
Yes.
All right.
Give me copies.
I can wish you copies of those, perfect.
Thank you.
I tell the teams would more easily track people down if they're ten years later.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I can only imagine that, I mean, Jerry, I'm sure was sending out those notices back in fourteen also.
Well, she'd be driving by it every day.
Yeah, exactly, she, yeah, yeah, so.
There we go.
Is, is it the board's, is it the board's pleasure that I talk to the county attorney's office to see if we have any recourse? On these back taxes before we abate them?
Yes.
Please do.
But.
These are abated, yeah, these are abated moving forward from this point on, see if we can, there's any recourse on future.
So you don't want to check on any recourse on the two that she's referring to?
It doesn't hurt to see what we could do to have that, that somebody owes us Crawford County. Some dollars so that they go to buy more property or do something, they could, should have to address the. Neglect of letting us know or letting us build up and become an issue, uh, just as a learning lesson, that you just don't walk away from something and.
We, we already cleaned these up for, so that Nick could put something in there if he wants.
Right, if we want to go after those people, even though we paid it, they still would technically owe us, and that'd be an attorney question what we could do, doesn't hurt. If we can't, we can't, if we can, we should try.
Okay.
Does that make sense, Sheri?
It does, thank you.
That's, okay, thank you, Sheri.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, Amy.
Today, I hope everybody had some great thought on naming the building at one fifteen North Fourteenth Street. Only the city center, uh, that name needs to kind of encompass what that building really does.
Fort Fourteenth Street Zoo. I'm gonna call it Fort Wheezy.
Okay, okay, all right. All right, I just came up with Crawford County, uh, Community Complex. Cause we do more than one thing there, and actually, as, uh, Tayo was talking, I was thinking we could maybe have a space that we can start having. No, it'd be the same space. Just a place for people to gather that are suffering with addiction, if we can get, that we can give them. That would just give the place, we're not offering any nurses, just a place to, to get together that we could offer, that, I've just.
Public service.
Will you reach out to any of the public health board members?
I did not, because then that just complicates it a little bit, so it's kind of.
I mean, I never got any input from the public, and I mean, I think you'll get input when you make it named, when you decide to name it something, then you'll get the input. That's a terrible name.
That's a terrible name, um.
Yeah.
I, I just think it needs to be a more of a complex because we do do that. It's, uh, and it is Crawford County Community. And that's, uh.
You said Crawford County Community Complex?
Or Center.
Or do you?
Center or complex, I just, I, I like the, I like it's complex because.
Services. Community services, com.
That's where we're all getting together.
I'm, I guess when I hear complex, I'm thinking like mall.
Well, we got the veterans building.
Complex means it's complex, you say. Yeah, yeah.
We got, we got, we got veterans downstairs.
I'm saying Crawford County Community Services.
Thank you, so are they still gonna have like a. I'm just envisioning how this is gonna look, you have Crawford County Community Services or Complex. On the building and then underneath, by the doors, you're walking upstairs, it's gonna say Crawford County Public Health, and then underneath downstairs, you're gonna have.
Better, I understand, that's what I would say, cause otherwise. Well, Wheezy's gonna have all her own stuff.
Yep, her.
Right, hers will be on her glass, on her windows.
And will Public Health have it on their windows?
They want to, they can do whatever they want.
It's, right now, it's.
I just did the one, I just did the back one.
You know, so you have to have a name on, on the website of what the building is, so when you're driving by, you know you're at the right place. You know, so, uh, I, unless we're gonna have veterans be one fifteen A and Public Health one fifteen B, you know. So they know, do you go in here or you go there, cause it truly is two different services in one building.
Yeah.
But it's still complex.
Question, are they having, is it gonna be like suite A and suite B?
So for mailing.
For mailing purposes, so that you're not.
We're thinking.
Why does that matter in our discussion today?
Right, that's a post office thing.
Well, as part of your naming it, you know, I know, but it won't be part of the name, if you mail it, if you mail it to the name of the building, is it going?
Crawford County Embassy Suites.
There are only two places, I think they can figure out the mail part.
Well.
I would say, but.
If, if you go to Crawford County Memorial Hospital, you, you, that's the name of the building. But you go inside and they have the, uh, um. Doctors and then they have the specialties and then they have, uh, you know, the nursery. You know, there are all these different departments inside that one building. So our, I thought our task today was name the building so that on the GPS map. If you're looking for it, you know, that that's, you're at the building. And what it's doing inside the building is separated and a little bit different, cause. My understanding is they worked that out, that WIC is going to be able to meet there, and so they would have to know what building that is in. So we're not gonna call it the Veterans Affairs Building. It d- does house veterans affairs, but it, um.
Yeah, we're not gonna call it Public Health or.
No, no, because it's more than that.
They don't even call themselves.
Well, yeah. Crawford County Community Services Complex.
And Kyle probably like, and we farm, we buy or rent, and it'll be like, it's gonna be center forever.
Gotta think of our, uh.
Yeah.
How big do you want this sign?
Uncle Joe's Farm.
Sorry, Debbie Doherty.
So you say C.
Buildings. You mailed this building.
Or acronym.
So mail it over between Louise and Public Health and who knows.
C, 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 S, D. All right.
Ow, you're another liar in on us.
And health. I don't know, uh, and it's, is it important we do it today?
All services that are, it's all services that are beneficial to the community. Crawford County Community.
Services, I'm good. We haven't ordered the letters yet. So.
Yeah, let's not get.
Should be continued.
I do have a lot of Cs ordered, but.
C, 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 S.
E, C, D, S, C.
Or.
Oh.
Annex, it's also going to have a.
I don't know.
I don't know how we could go on with Crawford County Community Service Building.
Yeah, building complex.
But I could also entertain, uh, it's not tabling it, uh, moving it to another meeting, we've got the big conversation.
To a meeting after the building.
We do have a meeting, a Public Health meeting next week, so.
Awesome.
Let's wait till after that.
Bring it to them.
Well, they only get a vote.
They, they get a. They get a.
Throw them some of the ideas we.
Yep.
Had today and see what they think, I mean, we're the one.
If they approve or if they hate it, if anybody hates it.
And they'll still, their, their suite will still be named Public Health or whatever.
I hope hospitals come back into the work.
No, I would like, no. For mailing purposes, I mean, I think it would make sense to have Louise have hers. I'll deliver it right there.
Crawford County Public Service.
But those are some details that we can work out, we just need to know uh how we want to name this building, so it represents what it does and what it is, so. We all came very similar, nobody wanted to change the word Crawford County, so we stayed really close on that, so.
Crawford County Fourteenth Street Zoo is out.
I have. I vetoed that one, how's that? That one's been vetoed. I vetoed that. Anyways, uh, it's good to get that, that talk out there and to think about it.
That might be the most accurate description, but it probably won't be the most politically correct.
That never stopped us.
We're down to citizens' input, I see Chuck is here, Chuck, did you have some numbers you wanted to bring to us? I knew it. He doesn't have any paper.
The numbers guy.
Oh, she's like, give you last week.
Yeah.
Throw the pink one away.
The pink one?
Pink one's away. I have a new pink one for you. Remember I told you, I uh, I took some of their match up.
I've been here.
My finance file, oh, look, she had it hidden underneath.
There's someone's phone, sorry.
The vault form. Look at the one that's one of them. Five, it isn't colored.
Okay. There's another one, there's.
And you got the right thing, I mean, I, all the totals are right. Okay, all these, I don't care, but I hear that cut off, I'm not, she got off, or whatever, correct, now. Okay, well, naturally, that'd be big. But my whole thing in doing this was to, you know, I was opposed, you know, I wasn't very concerned about the departments, you guys were, but I'm glad you were.
The totals are right. Tolls are right.
All of them are saying.
So there's still like four hundred and sixty two over budget?
Excuse me?
Yeah. They have it, yeah. The sheriff, and Craig asked about the tables down below. Uh, the difference there is this doesn't have any tax money. Big enough to come up here. We use them up here in the box, you know, they don't have any tax money.
I see, okay.
Department line. And then also a nine nine department. That we usually don't work with, you go back to.
So down below, that has got nothing that says county funds required, none of that, that money is in here.
No, it's all in there.
Or is it, it's all in here?
It's all in there, but you need to have tax money.
So it's here.
Pretty close, they're at.
We've got a million between.
Beginning down on. Expenditures.
Yeah.
All expenditures in there. And then tax revenue would have been there. And I just took that bottom part off the fours we have.
This was an interesting change. Thank you for clarification.
Yeah, I should.
That's the sheriff. Are you getting Wheezy, there's more? Okay, Chuck. Thank you. Yeah, just throw the other one. Chuck, is that accurate? The last time the sheriff was actually way over as well. But now it shows that he is, he actually. And he used more than.
I didn't understand anything on the sheriff, I didn't, well.
Can they get a line assigned out here anymore?
It, why don't you just throw in?
I didn't throw anything, I wanted to throw extra.
Well, you never brought newspapers with this building. We're still working all the shit. Oh, no, I got the sheriff list out there, it's kind of.
That'd be a, at least you know cost.
Exact same.
Our increase.
Numbers we got here. I must have seen that on a different one. Too many things.
Minus the expenditures.
That means you didn't spend as much, that means you still got money to spend.
That's right.
Uh, just, I'd bring to your attention, I would balance it.
Thank you.
We're out, it's forty four, that's. It's the same, we're sixty. Well. They were three eighty, they're four stations. This is the one man I draw on.
It's gonna be done in a three week range, completion and hang up all the way.
It's a tall email, but I just want you to, they talked to Jim L, the DOT, they're setting the last eight per sessions today tomorrow. Uh, he said probably in a three week range. All of it, they're gonna be. Very fast, yeah. Yeah, so, just, you know, I'm not, three week range.
Right.
Well, it seems like there's, it's a big, there's a lot of question on Facebook, you know, and the responses, the answers that come back are not. We said you didn't. Big information that is accurate, but I'm not answering, I'm not gonna say anything unless.
You can't, but, you know, today is the twentieth of August, okay, you know, the Labor Day weekend coming up, you know, and so, you know, if they set.
County fifteen, it's on the force.
Yes, that'd be a good one, but I wouldn't say that. It'll be done when it's done.
Correct.
But if you think about it, okay, you know, now they, then they have the back, you know. Okay, that's the range, just, yeah, and they have to pay you that. You know, just kind of start putting the numbers together and telling you that. You, that's about where it's gonna be.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Alrighty, citizens' input, uh. Bonnie, you have anything you want to add to citizens' input today?
Cindy loves.
Uh, Cindy loves, Jim? Any citizens' input? Okay, all right. All right, thank you, we have seven. All right, all favor I. Any pose same sign, chair was side, we are now officially adjourned, thank you everybody for input.